Right, I will phrase that. Ladies and gentlemen, members, can we... Members and visitors, I'm going to get this one.
Dump the hammer, Chair.
Okay. Just give a second for Gerry to sit down and then we'll be there. Okay, we'll start now. Item one, can we ask the committee to agree the minutes of the previous meeting held on the 5th of November?
Agreed.
Thank you. Amy, apologies for absence.
Thank you, Chair. My apologies from Council Mike Brown and Council Robert Nigus.
Okay, Amy, anything in terms of disclosure of interest?
None received before the meeting, Chair.
Are there any disclosures that any members wish to make? Okay, thank you. Amy, any questions from members of the public?
None received, Chair.
Any questions from members?
Also none received, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, we'll quickly move on then, that's good. If we can make that progress, we should be doing very well. Item six, Sarah, I believe that you're going to talk to us and introduce this item. And we're talking here of the certification letter for 2017/18, and it's on pages seven to ten on our agenda papers.
Thank you very much, Chair. My colleague Tom Beaker's going to talk through this item.
Thank you. So, members will be aware that we undertake an annual programme of work on the housing benefits subsidy claim. This particular letter relates to the work for the year ended 1st March 2018. The work was undertaken over the summer, commencing in August and fining around November last year. This is a piece of work on a subsidy claim where Waverley Borough Council claims £28.5 million in this case from Department of Work and Pensions. This is for payment of housing benefits to people in the borough. As is typical for this piece of work there, or at least a piece of work in previous years at Waverley Borough Council, there are a small number of errors, so it is worth going through this item in some level of detail. But I won't exhaustively go through the items in the appendix. So if I could just highlight a piece of work, as I say, it was completed in November last year. This is our formal report and sign off on that piece of work. We identified two errors in the previous year, sorry, two errors in the current year which relates to items which occurred in 2016/17. This is where we undertook extended testing on specific risk areas which were detailed in the appendix. There's also one new area where we identified errors relating to calculation of the childcare allowance item. The extrapolated financial impact on the claim of these errors has been reported to DWP, but it was insignificant compared to the total subsidy receivable, and that is evident from the appendix as well. As a result of these errors, we have qualified the claim and reported the findings to DWP. This was the same as in the last two previous years. DWP may require the council to want to take further work, but as yet have not specifically requested that. Also to note, the indicative fee for this work was based on the fee for the work in 2015/16. We have agreed a fee for 2018/19 to carry out this work as well. That fee is reported in our external audit plan, so we'll come on to that in a little bit. The items in appendix A, as I say, aren't going into great detail. We've identified a small number of errors which were reported in terms of their exact error value and then their extrapolated error value. Our only recommendation for officers was to look into their internal quality assurance process relating to these specific areas, as there was no widespread cause for these errors that we identified relating to the systems or processes in Waverley's housing benefits department. And finally, in appendix B, just a note for 2017/18 certification work. As I say, we've agreed a fee for next year, which is reported in our external audit plan. That's as much detail as I was planning to go into, but if anyone has any specific questions, I'm happy to answer those now.
Okay, members. Thank you very, very much for that. What is 40-plus testing?
So, the specific testing approach is set up with DWP and requires us to do initial testing, which is a sample of 20 claims. Where we find an error, we are required to do 40-plus testing, which is a specific testing of 40 claims relating to the specific error that we found. So for example, where I said there was an error on childcare allowance, we then tested a subsequent 40 claims specifically on the childcare allowance.
Thank you. When you refer to the HRA rent rebate, which is due to an error in the claimant's income, the value of the overpayment was 871, the extrapolated effect was 8125. Can you explain how you go from the actual error to the extrapolated effect?
Certainly. So, management in the housing benefits department will provide us with a population of all claims which could have been affected by the overpayment, and we would essentially do an estimate of if this error rate applied over the whole population, what the total amount would be, but it's not an exact amount at all.
Okay, my last question. I mean, the only... I can imagine these things happen, but you seem to imply that the same error occurred in previous years.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any reason to be concerned why somehow the same error keeps on cropping up? Was there action we should have taken to make sure that once is enough and we shouldn't happen again? Is that an unreasonable approach to take?
I think our... So our work requires us to do a specific set of tests in subsequent years to identify these errors. I believe in this case relating to HRA rent payments related to earned income, the error was to some extent relating to either user error or minor errors in the way that it was processed. But I don't think we noted anything specifically in our work that suggests there's a deficiency in the way the housing benefits claim is produced, and if so, we would have reported that.
So you say, I mean, was the error from someone, if you like, being given wrong information by the claimant? Or was the miscalculation?
No, so in that case, the error wouldn't necessarily be reported as an error, because the councillors working with the information, as they've been provided by the claimant. In this case, it was purely an actual error on the part of the benefits assessor entering things into the system and taking the specific figures in.
I see.
And if I could provide some context, I signed nine housing benefit claims last year, and only one of them did they not have some errors with a qualification letter. So whilst that doesn't necessarily make it better, it just gives you that context. This is a complex technical area where one little error can create this.
And the last question, Richard, perhaps gives that context, is how many claims are actually processed? Roughly. So Graham, would you like to come in?
Yes, so this is the other bit of context. So in terms of sort of customer caseload at any point in time, please, are we talking about 5,000 households on...
It's around about 6,000.
About 6,000 households. But in any one year, the change of circumstances, the number of processes that the team make across that caseload, it's probably tens of thousands, actually.
So it's about 25,000.
25,000, there we are. So that's the number of changes.
One household has five changes of circumstances per annum, yeah?
Yeah.
More, actually. Some have very few, if there's a sort of a steady income from a pension or anything. But self-employed, there are lots of moving parts to the benefits thing, so...
Thank you, that's very useful, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, members?
I was going to ask exactly the same questions that Council Mullin picked up on, so we've obviously been reading the same documents. In terms of the extrapolated effect, could we please ask that somewhere, for the benefit of new councillors, we've got... The things that we learn, we should have them written down, because in a year's time, we'll ask the same question all over again, because we'll have forgotten what was said today. We need to have some way of people just understanding the language without us having to constantly ask about it and spend five minutes of every meeting doing it. So, you know, when we get these documents, I'm not saying it's you necessarily, perhaps it's our officers, but we need some guidance for audit committee members and for other councillors, telling us that when we read this extrapolated effect, we understand it. Because it was so simple and obvious when you told me that I was a village idiot at that moment.
I think that's a good idea. We'll admit that we're asking the auditors to put just a little explanation on things. You know all about it. So do our officers, but we as auditors come here and ask the silly questions. Except for there are no silly questions.
There are no silly questions.
These are questions.
Further to that, Chair, and if I may, you did mention that the... We may be required, DWP may require the council to undertake further work or provide assurances on the areas identified. What sort of work are they going to need? You know, what can we expect them to want us to do more than we've done, and why haven't we done it then?
So essentially, we don't make an adjustment on the basis of an extrapolation, because the extrapolation assumes that every single case would have had that error, and of course, we don't have the evidence for that. Occasionally, the DWP will ask for the whole of that population to be looked at or further work done to be able to reach an actual amendment. But they don't... They ask in certain cases, they don't always ask, they might speak...
Can we ask... Have they asked us as Waverley in the past five years to come back? Have they come back, because we asked the same question last year? So in the last five years, we haven't been, as a result of our qualification, we haven't been asked to do any further work?
No, and on this level of immateriality, it's highly unlikely. And I mean, what the DWP can do is intervene and send in a team if they have concerns. They haven't... They've never done that here. And on these levels of errors, I think it's, you know, highly unlikely that they would ask for us to do any more work actually on £28 million worth.
There's not a problem with this at all, Chair. I see it as, you know, nobody's perfect. At least of all the people who are making the claims in the first place, there's going to be errors, there'll be mistakes, and we're just being assiduous in picking up those after the fact where things have happened and it's required of us, but it's a tick box almost, as long as there isn't a great big red flag coming out of it, and if you... It's a reasonable thing, very well.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to raise? Okay, so everyone happy with the received certification letter? Can we move on to item seven, the external audit plan? So you're back to you.
So the external audit plan starts on page 11 of your pack. And I draw your attention essentially to page 13, which provides just that headline of it. In here, we set out the work we are intending to do over the course of the audit. And we pulled out three significant risks here. So by significant, those are the risks that we intend to focus audit, or an area of audit focus. So the management override of controls is presumed risk for any audit of any type of entity. So we will do certain work to address that risk. The other two, the valuation of your plant property and equipment and the valuation of your net pension fund liability. Both of these items are very large in your accounts. Both of them are based on some significant estimates, and therefore, as part of the audit, we will look into those areas in more detail, and that's why we identify those as significant from an audit perspective. We also set out there what our materiality level is. And I think in terms of materiality, this is about saying to you, any errors above that level, we would be having to have significant conversations with officers. Errors above the trivial, which is in there, between trivial and material, we would be reporting to you, but it would depend on what the issue was, and there would always be a professional conversation with the finance team and officers to work out what next. But those would be reported to with the evidence. As members are aware, as well as giving you an opinion on the accounts, we've given an opinion on your arrangements to secure value for money. And there is one significant risk that we've identified, which is we want to spend a little bit more time looking at your financial position. Given the position of local government financing across the country, it's just something we want to spend a bit more time making sure that we understand your arrangements in there. The rest of that report talks through the timing. We have arrangements in place to make sure that we meet the statutory deadlines, which is by the end of July 2019, to be able to sign both opinions. And it sets out the fee there, which you will see has come down from the previous year. You joined with PSAA, and as part of the new arrangements, new contracting, those fees have been reduced as a result of it. And we say that we're independent of you, which we are. I think the only other part on the ethical standards to draw your attention to on, looking on page 23 of your pack, is there are three pieces of work that we do over and upon that audit, and there are additional fees for that. And as an audit committee, you need to be comfortable, that you understand that that doesn't... We don't believe that impacts on our independence. The first one is the housing benefits for next year, which we've just spoken about. We also certify something called the housing capital receipts return, and we do the independent examinations of two of your charities. That's all I was going to say, but I'm really happy to take these up questions.
All right, just a couple from me to start with. I mean, you've got great emphasis on our ability to meet your timing.
Yes.
And I would ask Peter and Vicky, are you happy with that, that we can meet their timing?
Oh yes, no, we work quite closely together to sort out all the audits.
Yep, good.
Yes.
And then can I ask the auditors, are you sure you're going to meet your timing? Because you were fairly close to the deadline last time. We have an audit meeting without really audit recommendations.
Okay. So we have arrangements in place and teams in place to be able to meet the 31st of July. I think we can certainly take that feedback on board and make sure we have a detailed conversation with the finance team about the timing of papers. I think that details page is reflecting that all of our local authorities are all needing to be done by 31st of July, and actually, there is an impact if one authority misses deadlines, so...
Yeah, I mean, we want to see the papers before the meeting, not after the meeting.
Absolutely.
If I could just add to that one, the specific point I think members made at the committee in July was the desire to not have a number of issues left unresolved that we have still to complete at the audit committee date. That was as a result of the papers process being that we would submit that report in a draft state a week before the committee, and then present the report at committee, having actually resolved some of those issues that were on the checklist. And I believe what we said at the last meeting, which we'll stick to for this year, is that we will provide an updated report the night before the audit committee in July.
Sounds to me definitely forward. Thank you. Right, members. Richard, you...
Yeah, a couple of fairly minor points. On your page three, I guess our page 13, just the way you stated the materiality, the divergence between the prior year and the current year amount of materiality is in excess of 10%. Has our gross expenditure really gone up that much? I mean, it's a percentage of a number we must have given you, but it seems to be a large change over the two years. Similarly, for the number that's clearly trivial, that's again an excess of 10% change over the years.
So I believe so. I believe it's based on a gross expenditure position. There may have been elements to which there were non-recurring items in some of the expenditure, which meant that we did not necessarily update the prior year benchmark to meet exactly that point. But yeah, as you say, the two numbers are linked, so the movement between them is one and the same. And yeah, it's based on gross expenditure for the year. We would reassess it each year based purely on that gross expenditure number as a starting point and the surrounding judgements to that.
So have you... Just asking for clarification. Do you produce the materiality number, or do we give it to you?
It's all determination.
So you base it on last year's figures?
Yes, and we would update it for the draft accounts figures where there is a significant difference to what we were expecting.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Richard.
Okay. Just on your page, your page four, our page 14, just maybe a fussy about precision of wording. On the right-hand column, changes to the SIF accounting code. We have the statement, "As there is minimal diversity in the financial instruments held by the entity, it would be hugely relevant." What does hugely relevant mean, please? Surely it must be material or immaterial?
So I think the standard specifically looks at some of the more complex financial instruments, which generally local authorities do not engage in.
Yeah, I understand that. I just don't understand what hugely relevant means.
It's a rather unaccountant type phrase.
Yeah.
We're not expecting it to have a significant impact on your accounts, and I think that's a conversation that we're having with officers who will make their assessment first, but at the planning stage, we're not expecting it to be significant.
So are you willing to accept that significance?
Well, yeah.
Impacts.
Take it as is.
Okay. That's it?
Gerry, on that same page, Chair, and I'm not sure whether this is the place to ask this, and we have got a very large agenda, so I want to try and rattle through. On the left-hand side, under financial pressures, under that heading, it says that we're planning to make the shortfall by increasing council tax, pursuing savings plans, growing alternative review streams, et cetera. How deeply do you get into looking and commenting upon whether that is realistic or whether there is a big risk for us and where that comes through? And exactly the same in the next column, right next to those words, we've got, "We will need to review your arrangements and plans to mitigate risks arising from Brexit", which is a word that doesn't come up very often, does it, Brexit? But I suppose one day we'll have to think about it. Is it too late for us to know whether we have got plans and things in place? Is there somewhere else we would know in as governance, you know, the people who are meant to be checking up on this?
Can we ask a question, let the minds decide?
Okay. So on the financial pressures, because we identified a significant risk within the value for money, we are looking at your arrangements to manage that risk. So we will look at your midterm financial plan, we will hold interviews with key officers and understand how you've come about creating that plan. And, you know, based on our other knowledge around, are there significant assumptions? If you said what we actually think pay is going to go up 15%, we'd probably challenge that. But if it's, you know, there are reasonable assumptions that we would expect, you would probably have already challenged it, but we do want to look back in a little more detail. It is not a big piece of consultancy work, so I think it's just about being clear in looking at your arrangements to manage your financial position going forward. Are you clear about it? Do you know that? I think on your Brexit one, I think what we're saying there is clearly there is potential for this to be a challenge. What we're expecting organisations to have done is you have your own established risk management arrangements, and you would just look through, does Brexit impact on any of those and how do you need to respond? But we would be expecting it to be part of your normal approaches.
Can we just let Graham come in and give you a response?
Just on the Brexit point, we do have a plan. We've drawn from government guidance. Louise Norrie, who works for Robyn in our policy team, she's pulled together a plan of our risk exposure that's very specific to Waverley, and we'll just keep it a watching brief.
Perhaps somebody could tell us what the Brexit plans, our position will be, I mean, decisions.
We cut the chains and sail off into the Atlantic, I think.
Yes. And Gerry's side?
Well, no, I mean, in a way, what I'm also asking, and pointing no doubt is, given that we're not publishing this today as a finished document, or perhaps we are, and this is going to go into the public domain after it's happened, and I just don't think that sort of like sits properly with people when residents at home read that we've been working hard after the fact to make some plans for something which has already happened, which will be the case in a fortnight's time possibly, or whenever, may not be. Do you know what I mean? I'm just looking at, should we be giving people the impression that... And the public don't know what the plans are, as you've asked yourself, Chair, and that we want a little bit more guidance on that. Just, is it right for us to have that in there?
What's your question, Chair?
You know, how am I meant to, I know as a member of the public sat at home, meant to approach this when they're reading this in a few weeks' time and has just been published by the council saying, "You will need to review your arrangements and plans to mitigate risk on Brexit"? You know, like as though we're all working behind the times and we don't know what we're doing.
So this report's already in the public arena, the Grant Thornton's report, is this what you meant, Chair? So this agenda's been in the public arena for over a week with this report on it. Is that what you were asking?
Well, I don't know. Has it been... Do we adopt it, or is it notified by council, or what?
So the audit committee notes Grant Thornton's plan on this agenda this evening.
Really, back to what the chair was saying, is what are our plans?
Yeah. I don't think it's a question of discuss our plans tonight. The orders are quite rightly deciding, we would expect you to have a Brexit plan, and during this process, we will actually go through and see what sort of impact it's going to have and come back. So I mean, it's not... They're not reviewing our Brexit plans as such. It's the consequences, the impact. Is that a reason?
Yes, so this page is giving you some top issues that we're aware of, that we're expecting you to have arrangements in place to manage.
Yep. And section 151, officer has said, "We do have a plan." Okay, can we move on? Council Mullin?
Two minutes. On that point, again, if you're being pedantic, I think if you had key matters that will affect, impact our audit, to be clear, because our audit doesn't begin until after those events. That would, I think, give the flavour of what we're expecting us to do there. And secondly, if you ask materiality, you say we're obliged to report uncorrected admissions of statements other than those which are clearly trivial to you. And that is 90,000. And yet, you've gone to great trouble to report something of even an extrapolated effect of 8,000 when dealing with the...
Right. So on the certification report, so the trivial for the main audit for your accounts is the 90,000. The DWP doesn't allow us to set a triviality level or a material level. So any error, even if it's one pound, is required to be reported. It's just a slightly different framework.
I appreciate that. Certainly, I didn't quite follow the argument as to why we've had this large increase in materiality thresholds. I mean, Tom, you were saying that you might have left something out of the calculation last time.
So since we need calculation, it is based purely on total gross expenditure and the 2% figure there, which is a judgment that we provided.
Without wishing to... I mean, yes, I don't think things have changed, so I'm actually puzzled as to why there has been this, perhaps where you can...
So I'm pretty sure it includes capital expenditure as well. I don't know whether you've got the calculation in front of you, Tom.
Not right in front of me.
Okay. And I suspect that's where the fluctuation comes in, but we can certainly check and come back to it.
Could we come back to...
Yeah, of course.
Thank you, Chair.
And can I also clarify that as far as an audit committee, we do get from our tax function all changes they've made as a result of the audit. They give it to us, as well as you reporting your triviality. So we do have a, I was going to say a confession session, we do have an informal session which gives us an idea of what changes. Okay, if that puts members' minds at rest. Council, you've finished, sorry. Council 10 then.
Thank you. Just a couple of basic queries to start with. One of them is just for clarification, on your page five, just could you explain what recorded cash at bank not valid? Not valid as a risk, I'm assuming? Just that's it, simply what it is? Okay, sorry?
Simply, that's the thing.
Yeah, fine, I did think that, but just wanted to clarify. And then also, again, it's around terminology, language. About the value, page seven, your page seven, about valuation of pension fund net liability. And you're just saying that as reflected in its balance sheet, represents a significant estimate. Perhaps you could just explain that to me, please? What that actually means? In layman's terms, please.
So you employ an actuary to estimate how much you think your future pensions are, how much you can have to spend out in that, that's what the liability is. And because you don't know for certain how long all your pensioners are going to need to have their pension paid for, so that's part of the estimate that the actuaries will give you, but it's also impacted on by the value of the assets, the pension fund assets that are held, and predictions of how those might perform over the next 20, 30, 40 years. So there's a lot of estimation in there.
Lots of estimating, I get it now.
So that's why we asked the questions on that.
Thank you, that's great, thank you.
Council 10, we have had previously special sessions to go through the pension calculations, and the session that we will have will have quite a lot on pensions, and we spend quite a bit of time talking to finance about those assumptions. So you will get a chance to look at it.
Very quick, I'm sorry, I'm going to be pedantic again. Could I ask, this is the future... Could I ask, this is, the future expressed as, "Your pension fund asset liability is reflected in its balance sheet", ours or its, interesting, "are actuarially estimated and represent a significant item in the data statement", so that's the point.
That's, yes, I get that point.
Yeah, including, the accountants know exactly what they mean. Those of us who are not accountants, I'm certainly a banker, so I like things to be in simpler English. But is that its and actually is that ours or?
In your, yes.
Yeah, perhaps your balance sheet would be better too. So, "in your balance sheet are actuarially estimated and represent a significant item in the data statement", that's again, thank you very much.
So is there anything that you would wish to say to us? And is there anything that, carrying over from the last audit that we are going to be particularly mindful, other than the points you've identified in here?
I don't think there's anything else that has been brought to my attention that we want to, we need to bring to your attention. And as far as I understand it, notwithstanding the audit reporting process, everything that I've been told is actually the audit process does run smoothly here.
Okay, thank you. Can we, can I say, hold on?
Sorry, Chairman, yes, we're on, looking at pages sixteen and seventeen, I think, and I don't want to labour it, but "under significant risks identified on page sixteen and fraud in revenue recognition", rebutted, I can understand, it says that it has been rebutted and therefore there's no need to go into it and I think to most, that could be a flag to members of the public that maybe they should look at something. If somebody said, "Hey, we're just not going to look at that because we've rebutted it, you know, we've decided it doesn't matter", or there's no chance of it happening. And here it says, "The presumption can be rebutted if you conclude there's no risk of material misstatement", and that would happen if there is no motivation, for instance, for there to be any material, like it says against the bullet point, "There's little incentive to manipulate revenue recognition", and I like the third one, "The culture and ethical frameworks of local authorities, including Waverley Borough Council, mean that all forms of fraud are seen as unacceptable." Now, as far as I'm concerned, the public would look at that with, their faces slightly skewed at the very least. And what about between HRA and general funds, for instance? I mean, I don't know how many councils that you work with, there are plenty of councils that still do have a housing revenue accounts, a lot of pressure. Housing revenue accounts generally fairly well off by comparison to general funds, at least, you know, looking forward. There's obviously a lot of incentive there, possibly politically, not amongst the offices necessarily or whatever, but doesn't matter who. There's obviously some motivations there for, to use HRA funds for general fund purposes and that sort of thing. So to what extent, you say you've just rebutted it, there's no chance of this happening. To most people out there, they think, "Hang on a minute, you know, so what have you looked at in that sort of..."
Ask the question and then stop, please, Councilor.
So where we have picked that up is through the management override of controls because it would have to be something that management had chosen to do, that's where, that's where we deem that risk to be. And that's where we focus our testing, looking around your general testing, how you move items between the, between those statements.
And, but you wouldn't do any checking further to make sure that all the items that were down as general fund income, you know, car park incomes and whatever, to help with that?
We apply, so this is where we're talking about significant audit risks and applying special audit processes to them. We will absolutely apply audit processes to income sources. What we're saying there is that there's not anything that's elevated that risk to require significant special processes, but we absolutely, and I'm sure the finance team know, they deal with our queries and our sample testing on income.
So basically, this is, I have to try and keep my head and, you know, anybody watching has to keep their head around the idea that we are looking at the significant risks here and if we're actually looking at the details, perhaps then we should be looking at scrutiny, a separate process that should be looking at those issues. It's not within our remit, therefore, to get into any of the detail of whether or how much money is scrutinized out of a general fund to, out of a HRA to the general fund, if it's happening.
Councilor Hamon, can you, I don't quite understand, you're identifying a risk, it's made a statement that can there be a crossover between HRA, general, I understand, yes? And I think we've had a comment back and I will ask the section 151 officer to comment, but that we're defining here an audit process and the audit process is exceptional issues and focus and a standard audit. And I'm quite happy for us to have a session to go through what would cover by a normal audit. But don't forget, we also have our own internal audit process which dovetails into this. Mr Park, would you?
And we also have the scrutiny process already, Chairman, where our spend and income against budgets are reported to scrutiny and that's where any issues would potentially be identified. So, I mean, there's a legal ring fence around the housing revenue account and there are codes of practice around it. There are costs that fall between the two, so support costs, this building, et cetera, and there's guidance around how those have to be apportioned between the two. And the audit team, you know, you look through your samples of journals and things, et cetera. So, but, I mean, it would be impossible to look at every single transaction on either housing revenue account or the general fund, but we are bound by professional codes of practice and indeed legislation when it comes to the ring fence around the housing revenue account, so.
I think we've covered that point once we've got, and gentlemen, can we accept the internal audit plan? Quite happy with that. Okay. We can move on. Do you need to disappear now?
If that's okay.
Yes, I probably would like to come with you, but, yes.
You're making more enjoyment than listening to us.
Item eight, if I can just introduce this, well, we have looked at the terms of reference, we agreed we needed to update them. And we've had discussions, the vice chair and myself have had discussions with Robin Taylor, and we felt that although we liked the idea of basing it on the SITFA Audit Committee Guide and also their standard terms of reference, we didn't feel we had time to bring it forward to this meeting and we also thought that it would be good to have that as an item for the new committee post May. So what we are proposing here is that the Audit Committee notes the regulations and that it will be brought forward to the first meeting of the new committee. Unless there's any detailed comments of, sorry, unless there's any comments of principle, I would like to go to the proposal, but first of all, members, that acceptable to you?
Agreed.
Okay, so the recommendation is that the Audit Committee notes the publication of the 2018 SITFA Audit Committee's Practical Guide for Local Authorities and Police and that a draft of revised terms of reference for the Audit Committee will be brought forward to the first meeting of the committee in the new council year following detailed considerations of the updated guidance. We all agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. If we could go on to item nine, and process and documentation for supplementary estimates. You remember, at the previous meeting, we asked, we asked the Head of Policy and the section 151 officer to go away. And Graham, I believe you're going to introduce this item.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So we did go away, Robin and I sat down and we looked to our best to fit a framework around requests for supplementary estimates. The supplementary estimates, the reports says are, are sort of unexpected calls for expenditure that aren't budgeted for and require additional funding. They are set out, although the process for requesting is set out within the council's approved financial regulations. So what we're suggesting here is a process that expands on the financial regulations to ensure that not only is there a required, a set of required steps that officers would need to take in order to bring forward a supplementary request, but there's also a pro forma for them to fill out, just to ensure consistency, and that's in annex two. Chairman, hopefully it's sort of fairly self-explanatory and hopefully it addresses the points that the committee asked us to look at in November.
Okay, Councilor Seibon, do you want to?
I'd just like to congratulate the Speaker of the House, it's a crisp and concise, yet thorough process.
Okay. Councilor Hamon, you have others?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I mean, where it says on page thirty-three, how it relates to the council's corporate priorities, we all absolutely support that and I think this is a move in the right direction. I was just perhaps query in appendix two on page thirty-nine, which is the form that we're going to force you to fill in from now on. Like you, you might want to put dates on the top somewhere and when we ask how much money is being requested and what would it be spent on, I think there's also a question, when is it going to be spent? And when we're looking at what are the expected benefits, will the planned expenditure bring? We could bring in some grammar and we could do pros and cons rather than just the pros. I would have thought, like the likely consequences of our actions, Chairman, which we always ought to think about. And we have got one of the risks, if any, and agreeing or refusing, which, you know, I'm perfectly happy with, I think it's very good. But I just think that you'd always want to have the date on there of when you wrote it. You'd want to know when it's going to get spent and if we're looking at the pros, we should look at the cons. So I don't know whether you want to just advise something.
Councilor Mullin? Exactly, so Councilor Hamon has asked just the same question, so I thought we should say how and when it is supposed to be spent. And in fact, in the word "of" is missing after in four two eight three B, to the benefits of agreeing, just typewriters. And I think the recommendation, recommendation two can't be quite right because we're, so paragraph four two seven revised and it's really be, and the expanded as set out, or be supplemented perhaps as set out, with the provision of three new subpowers. So if the word revised becomes supplemented, that's not the right.
So, Chairman, this?
It's called the four twenty-eight, isn't it?
Well, and four twenty-nine and four thirty-three.
Okay, all right. Are we happy with that?
So basically, we're agreeing, we're going to say what and when it will be spent on, will it be spent on, and as you're saying.
This is going to executive next week?
Councilor Tandell?
Thank you, just quickly, I just wondered, just from a point of information, so the people who can fill this form in, are they just heads of service that would be filling this in, so it comes under that area? Okay, and also, when they're talking about the risks, would that be then linked back to the risk matrix? Or is that just any old risks that they can think of at the time?
No, I think that's a really good point. I think link it back to the risk appetite because that is now the approved risk appetite statement to some reference, so that would be helpful and we could even put that in here as a little note to prompt whoever's filling the form out.
With that, I think the risks should be spelt out in that form, but I think these surely could be if it's an unexpected or supplementary estimate, if something has arisen which we weren't expecting. So I think the actual nature of the risk might be something new. I mean, to give you a good, a good example, when the one that prompted this, which was spending three hundred thousand quid or up to it to defend the local plan, at that stage you don't think there was any risk in particular, perhaps the local plan not being met. But it's that sort of thing, that's what the risk of not spending that money was.
Yes, yes.
And it's, so the risk has to be precise, precisely stated as to why we're spending the money. And of course, the risk of agreeing is that you spend all that money, you don't get the result that you want.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
And does it get signed up by anybody? Sorry, Chairman, is there a sign office or does it just get?
A triple X.
I think that Councilor Hamon wants to ask that same question.
But, yes, it's the triple X at the bottom, but in the yellow bit. But is this going to executive next week and to council thereafter, because we might be asking officers to do something.
No, we could go straight from this meeting as part one item to council and then it will get put.
So there is time for you to, before the papers go out, to play the slightly...
Yeah, if you see on the front page, you'll see the portfolio of Jeth Hall, so he is aware of it.
But this committee, Chairman, as you know, approves the financial recs and recommends, or approves, as in recommends them to councils.
Yes, it doesn't go through.
Doesn't go by the executive, no, it's part of the governance framework.
To do it before the papers go out.
That's right.
I certainly would like to add my comments to Richard's at the beginning. Very grateful for the speed in which you've responded on this one and I think it addresses the root cause problem that was created by members of the public questioning something. It's not that there was anything majorly wrong, it just tightens up and specifies how we go through that process and to that I'm grateful, it's a great addition to our governance process.
Good, thank you.
So, thank you. If I could then read out the recommendations, it's recommended the Audit Committee endorses the processes set out within this report required to support all future requests for supplementary estimates and agrees to recommend to council that paragraph four point two seven, within the council's published financial regulations, be supplemented as set out within annex one and agreed to recommend to the council that the pro forma attached at annex two of this report will be added to the council's published financial regulations. Are we all agreed?
With the...
I agree to the amendment in the verbal and in it has recorded it, so we will put that in, yes?
Agreed.
Thank you. If we could move on now to item ten, annual governance, page forty-one to fifty. And I believe that Peter, well, Peter and Vicky, you're going to do the double act on this. Who's starting?
Well, I'll take the annual governance statement.
Good.
So this is our new version of annual governance statement and it dies with lead to the framework of government, the government framework. We had a session on this, so from that session, I've incorporated all the comments that I had from that. So I'm not sure how much detail you want to go into it again, but it's, I put bits in it from last year's annual governance statement, but I've just revised the format and some of the tables in it. So following our session last time, I picked up Robin's diagram on the councillor decision making, so that just goes on as per the slide that he uses in his introductions. And we brought in all the significant operational events in eighteen, nineteen, that section has been, has got a lot more in it for all the different stuff that we've done this year. Obviously, it's only the annual governance statement as that today will need revising before we publish it alongside the accounts for any governance issues that come up between now and then. It does need to be published with the unaudit accounts at the end of May.
The status of draft?
Yes, this is the draft. So if there are annual governance issues that we're picking up at the moment, that need to go in.
Okay, so is that, shall I open it to members' comments? Members, Councilor Seibon?
If I may, yes, I'm going to preface this with apologies that I didn't pick up on these details when we had our previous work sessions, but overall, very, very good, just detail on clause five point two, the heading is "Resolution of Significant Governance Issues", so that sort of implies things that have been completely closed out. But then we go to talk about air quality, which I believe is still, some of it is still with the police. And one would hope that when that is fully resolved, we will look to see if there are further learnings and if any applies. So I think it's stated to that effect because this implies it's completely closed. And due diligence, would it suggest that if any more then come out of the police investigation? I stand to be corrected on that, I don't know where we are with the police investigation, but I believe it's still ongoing.
On the equality?
Air quality, yeah, so then, you know, more stuff may have deteriorised.
Could we make sure that we have an update on that for the next meeting?
It's only one more sentence. And similarly on five point four, the judicial reviews again, the second sentence there, the officers of the Audit Committee reviewed the governance arrangements and no further significant governance issues were identified. Except we've just discussed the supplementary, supplementary estimate documents. So we did actually identify that there was need for a tightening of the government's arrangements around supplementary estimates. And I think that's, to quote that, is actually a positive, it demonstrates, you know, learning and... It demonstrates, you know, learning and improvement of process. So I'd appreciate if that could be considered for inclusion in the final document. But other than that, I really like the format here. Thank you.
Counselor Molyneux.
I wanted actually to clarify just what this paragraph was supposed to be getting at. If it's the governance issues, in a sense, the outcome is irrelevant. And the point was that we chose to defend it and to raise a supplementary estimate to do so. And this is what led to the governance issue, which has now been resolved. So if that's what this is getting at, then I think we need to be slightly more explicit. This doesn't actually, this always gives the impression that if someone's reading, saying, why have you mentioned this? Is a judicial review a governance issue in itself? I don't know what the answer is.
Well, a judicial review is a budget strategy.
Exactly. So the only reason for mentioning it is that it did give rise to a governance issue with some residents.
Not necessarily, then to the judicial review, it was, it was some questions that were raised by members of the public that came in, so that was.
But this is not made at all clear, the second paragraph has no relation to the first. We know, because we're sort of in the loop, why that is mentioned.
Sorry, which, which part?
Judicial reviews.
Yes.
Why one is mentioned in fact, we've had, I mean, council said judicial reviews, I'm afraid, a lot. So why, why, why are we mentioning this? When we go on to the second paragraph, surely if I was being transparent about it, because there were challenges.
Well, we just agreed to add that in.
Sorry, I didn't catch that up. I apologize.
Well, you're querying, I'm going to mention the judicial reviews in the first place, yes. So we discussed that at the previous work session we had. And the judicial reviews came about because organisations CPRA and PAL cast doubts about our governance, which we defended. So it was an issue.
You've got two quite separate things here, it's important not to confuse them. Governance in terms, I think, part of it was driven by the fact they felt that December twenty eighteen JPC was not properly constituted. But they also, I think their main claim, or their main protest, was against the substance of the decision.
But that was withdrawn and dealt with the constitution of the JPC.
Well, I mean, also, the substance of the decision meant that CPRA, as well as PAL, felt that we had, well, in fact, they were protesting there against the inspectors adding of part of working's unmet need and our acceptance of it. So that was the substance of why they caused all these two judicial reviews. But I thought the governance issue, so if you like, was that that then led to the fact that we quite sensibly agreed to spend three hundred, up to three hundred thousand pounds defending it.
That's right, and that's what we've got.
And that is what came, and then there was a challenge to, why did you do that? Because people were saying, surely you would want this to succeed, so why are you wasting public money defending something we think you should want to succeed? And then they even go teasing into that. There was no obvious paper trail as to how the council had agreed to spend so much money, more or less on demand from the executive, and that has led to item eight, item nine, sorry. We now have a proper paper trail. That's the point.
Which was actually discussed a minute at the last meeting, which we can actually use to.
All right, fine. I don't, what I'm saying is, this document here is wrapping up everything, is that this is going to be the public document, annual governance statement. And I feel that there's no obvious link between these two, makes it less, less clear. It's, it looks, to be honest, it's trying to hide something, which I'm sure that no one's intending, but if you're going to tell the story about this issue, you must tell it accurately.
Okay. So my understanding, Counselor Seaborn, is that we, the point we raised, we're agreeing to put in, point about we've made some changes to the, yes, so we're going to put in a paragraph to that effect.
Good, that's fine. It gave rise to issues about the procedure for gaining, for obtaining supplementary estimates, and that has now been provened as.
And I think we would have to also put in the fact that it's been appealed, one aspect of the decision.
Well, if you're going to mention this as a sort of background.
Because it is a governance state, and we've got a point at time, so we will need to put the appeal in.
Yes, appeals will be.
Am I happy with that?
Yeah, there are two separate governance issues.
Yes, the two separate issues.
Thank you.
Counselor Hammond? Sorry, take you back to page forty-two. Forty-two? Of the principles of the. The third bullet point of the principle one, ensuring effective arrangements are in place for the discharge of the monitoring officer function, I have serious issues with this at the moment, you know, because of my involvement with the standards procedures that we have. And we've just had a, which I have mentioned, and I'm getting absolutely nowhere with, the issue of the final EIA consent for a hundred and fifteen million pound Brightwell scheme having been done by an NMA, despite the fact that the decision notices states that it's unlawful to do so with a legal opinion. I'm happy to circulate, I've got plenty of copies of that if you want me to circulate it. Could we just go back to, let's just keep, let's answer some of those questions. I mean, the first one, the monitoring officers had a fair amount of publicity right up to council, right? It's there, it's visible. The other thing on the EIA, you've also had the council's legal opinions given you, back to you on those, on those issues. I don't think it's appropriate to raise those two issues here. I'm sorry, Chairman, I think it's the only place to, when we're being told, and I'm personally suffering for this, when I've brought matters up where I have been, after this proven correct, but at the time, everybody's been making the decisions on these major planning decisions, have been told that I was wrong, and I wasn't. And then I get hauled over the coals for it. And then we've got documents coming out, only on the thirteenth of February, Chairman, only a fortnight ago, just nearly three weeks ago, was the discharge of the final condition, because no more planning applications, we're told that we're going to arrive. Counselor Hammond, can I just stop you there? We've heard. We've got to make sure that these effective arrangements are in place, and I'm querying it because residents want to know, how can we turn a blind eye to this? We've heard your comments, I'm going to hear from Mr. Clark, who wanted to speak on.
Chairman, I just say that, of course, this is a table of principles, and it's stating that the council aims to achieve good standards of governance by. And the third bullet point is ensuring effective arrangements are in place for the discharge of monitoring officer functions. So I think unless members disagree with that as an aim, then it needs to stay in there.
Absolutely.
It is a governance issue that's been referred to, which I believe has been covered elsewhere. Well, it ties in, Chairman, really, with principle five, which is developing the council's capacity and capability of its leadership. And the first bullet point there is clearly defining the roles and responsibilities of members and officers with protocols, understanding of roles. Listen to Mr. Clark's explanation now, these are the aims and principles, that's what we work towards. And you may have an issue with the outcome, but that's partly what we address in other parts of the governance statement. You happy to accept that? No, Chairman, because, you know, as far as, you know, I've spent two and a half years trying to get answers to certain issues, and when I come to the end of it, it was one place which is this body. Counselor Hammond, you have made your major comments in a broadcast meeting, I've listened to them, I've said that this document is an aim document that's been clarified by Mr. Clark, this is not the point in which these points should be raised. Counselor Townsend?
Can I just ask just a couple of points clarifying for this actual framework which that we've got? And just on principle five, the third bullet point, and it's providing inductions, training and development to give all the appropriate skills, knowledge and support to fulfil their roles. I'm presuming their roles is the leadership and individuals within it. That's, that's that. Okay, great, that's fine. I just was, the others, other points in that actual principle are slightly clearer, whereas that one, reading it on its own, is, sort of gets left hanging slightly with there. And also, again, on principle seven, meetings and decisions are available on the council's website along with other transparency information. I just, I wasn't really clear on that one, it just sort of felt like it was slightly hanging in the air there, although obviously you then go on to qualify it with quarterly performance reviews, but whether or not there's anything, whether these are set in stone or whether there's anything that you can add by way of clarification. Transparency information, just, do you know, it's not particularly, yeah, just to try and make it clearer from the outside looking in, to be honest. And other than that, and updating it, as has already been said, to clarify the reason that the judicial review areas in the governance is, looks really good. Thank you.
Counselor Molyneux.
So one very small suggestion, if you simply reverse the order, the second and third bullet points on principle five, I think that you're there.
Yeah, it probably does, yeah.
And make it clear it's both as members and officers.
Yeah.
So that would not be too painful to change.
Thank you.
Have we addressed that from officers?
No.
No? Okay. Chairman, if I may, I know we zapped over agenda item eight, so I assume that people have read it, that the terms of reference, which involves Sitford's position statement to the page twenty-nine. And, you know, I am concerned that, you know, we read all this, these committee papers, as far as I'm concerned, the officers have done a fantastic job. We've got a lot of very, very good words here, but, you know, all that the residents can see, you know, if they read this, Sitford's position and all the great things which we're meant to be doing, there are one or two areas. Ninety-nine percent of what the council does is excellent, the stuff with, which is major political stuff, and we are here as a committee not to be political, to look at the facts, to just look at what we've got in, you know, the facts in front of us. There's all this wonderful, all these wonderful words saying we've got a candid approach, that it is our job to call on other people to hold the executive to account, support ethical values. Counselor Hammond, can I stop you there? We, I understand where you're going with it, but we have covered that point. We've said that this is going to come back to the next committee, that will improve the discussion on those points. I can assure you that having looked at the draft terms of reference, they are much more acceptable to me than the ones at the moment, which actually don't necessarily give the Audit Committee enough hours. So I would like us to try and move on with the agenda if we can. Yes, Chairman, I think that we have to confront some of the issues here where the risks, the real risks are involved. I mean, I'm trying to explain to you that what we had a couple of weeks ago is a significant, in fact, okay, let's start, let's start and do this logically, three weeks ago or so was it, we had a meeting of a briefing, an audit committee briefing, and I pointed out at that meeting that the executive papers and the council papers had said that the major risk to our reserves, to our financial strategy, was the risk of judicial review. And everybody said, oh, no, you're wrong. So I checked, it's paragraph thirty-seven of the council papers, I can read it to you if you want, and what it says is absolutely true. The main risk that we took to our reserves certainly, the council are saying, and we agreed it at the council meeting, is judicial review. We've then got a document agreed by the executive, and if I take you to page forty-five in front of us of what we're looking at, where it says a risk appetite statement was adopted in March twenty nineteen, can we correct that to February, because it was adopted by the executive at its February meeting? Do they ever disagree with that? Sorry, which paragraph were you talking about? Sorry, risk management, it's the last paragraph off page forty-five, Chairman, I do apologize.
Okay.
In the middle of it, it says a risk appetite statement was adopted in March twenty nineteen, with which documents the amount and type of risk the council's willing to take in order to achieve its strategic objectives. And I've made it clear, and it's again at the end of this meeting, that I have a regular problem with that, you know, with what the council has agreed to be our attitude towards risk in relation to.
Well, that's something up later, Counselor.
And, well, hopefully so, if we're allowed to go through it. We've got a lot of problems with this, Chairman, as far as I'm concerned. I know the officers have done a great job, they don't have the control. The question I, the question I was starting us with when I was looking, talking about principle one and principle five, where clearly defining the roles and responsibilities, is that, so we ensure a shared understanding of roles, I think we should have that, and I'm afraid I don't, and a lot of people don't, to understand who runs this council. We don't know. We don't know whether it's the members or the officers who are running the council, and so we don't know who we ought to go to and, you know, to get an explanation when we can't understand things, and when we see things going on that don't look right to us. And, you know, we know everybody's acting in good faith, we don't know who's running things, so ultimately it's responsible. I understand the background to some of your questions. What we've discussed before on page forty-two was the aims of the councils, the council's aims to achieve good standards of governance. Okay, if we're failing to do that, then we will look at that and we will report it. You've raised a number of issues over time, each of those issues has been addressed in public, in writing, and this is not the place to bring them up. There is a point you raised over the risk appetite, which I'm more than happy for you to raise under that item, in terms of the appetite to risk of legal challenge, et cetera. So you're happy with that, and we'll try and move on. Of course not, Chairman, because you know as well as I do, when I ask a question, and the answers that I get to the questions are never an answer to the question, are they? You know, if I, if I, for instance, was to ask now, you know, for instance, a question which appears all the time at planning meetings at the moment, the law states that we must have certain information in a prudent assessment, and we know it's not there, none of us are full, we know it's not there, and we don't get a, we can't get a candid answer, and everything in here says I can't get a candid answer, Chairman. We can't give you an answer for something we haven't had notice of. As a member, you're entitled to put a written question through to this Audit Committee. Now, I'd be tolerant in terms of where you're going with this, and I do understand the position. If I felt that you were not being engaged in some way, then I would be slightly more tolerant, but this isn't the place to bring this, to bring this up. So can we, can we leave that now? Counselor Molyneux.
I could bring some clarity, the way I see it is that if someone has an issue with the way the council is behaving or deciding or acting, then it is possible that the Audit Committee or an Audit and Surveillance Committee would be a body to bring the complaint to. And then you would expect that complaint to be addressed by the appropriate people. If, and I believe that that has been done, and the fact that you don't like the outcome, if I remember the advice taken by the council published before Christmas, and the advice given before council to various, four questions asked by various members, which one was from yourself. If you don't like that, then you've taken it as far as you can internally, and your only proper next step is to bring some sort of legal challenge to the council. And then if you can, because we're in a court, the council's role.
Counselor Molyneux only would have liked. But with respect, Chairman, these papers all say that it's the responsibility of this committee to look at these things, not to pass them on and just say, no, I'm sorry, you've got to see us in court. Well, we've got a risk appetite supposedly, which says that we can't have judicial reviews against, because it said that we need to term financial strategy. Counselor Hammond, please, we have an agenda item, I've covered that point, and you can raise that. As far as the other issues, right, I could give you an answer, if you are not happy with things, if you want things discussed that aren't on the agenda, then please submit that. Thank you. If there's no more points on the governance statement, then.
I have one of immense importance, Chairman, on page six of it. The budget strategy working group, sadly, it's only one working group at the moment, so we probably better lose the trivial S. It's the title on page six, Peter, top title.
Yes.
We're not that important here.
Okay.
My, sorry, what page was that, Chairman? It's page six of the, forty-six, above that, top left-hand corner. Very trivial point. But like, it's a different font to the rest of it, is a trivial point.
Thank you. Right, I'm going to make, put forward the recommendation, it's recommended the Audit Committee considers the draft annual statement and provides comments to officers. I don't think that's too difficult, I think we have provided comments to officers. At the next meeting, however, by the next meeting, you'll have made the draft public, which you can't do unless we approve it. Sorry, I'm not going to be, I'm going to replay that a bit. There are two things, first of all, it's got to, it's supposedly be a document signed up by the leader and the chief executive. So if you really are going to put it up as a draft document, then it must be a draft document.
So if you really are going to put it up as a, as a draft document, then it must be a draft document that's come from the audit committee at this status, it's not final. And we do need to resolve that, that issue in terms of how we get it to the point at which, because the last time, I think we were given a few hours, right, and by the time we responded, it had already been published.
Yeah, I re-read the audit reminder and all.
Yeah, I, it's, it's not just the audit breaks, it's our process for approval.
Hmm.
I'm certainly, I'm quite happy for you to say that it's a draft, right, it's not final, signed off by the audit committee, but it's a draft being discussed. And I would expect you to have got some endorsement from the chief executive and the leader of the council to do that. Okay, can we move on to item eleven, hopefully not so contentious? Um, statement of the coun- accounting policies, Vicky, you're going to enlighten us on this subject.
Well, it's just, um, we need to bring you the accounting policies for the forthcoming year. But also, so I've just done a briefing note, just setting out, um, the changes for this financial year as well, which we have had at this audit committee, just because you'll see those in the accounts when you get the, the sign off, so we've got those, we've got the ones for the forthcoming year, and I've just touched on the year after. So for this financial year, the two key changes are IFRS nine for financial instruments, and IFRS fifteen for revenue from contracts with customers. So the IFRS nine financial instruments, that just requires us to look at all our, uh, financial assets on the balance sheet and just reclassify them where necessary. And as, um, Sarah and Tom mentioned earlier, uh, about, um, our sort of financial instruments, ours are quite simple, so the reclassification has been quite simple, and there has, there hasn't been an impact, or there won't be an impact on our accounts. And I have put a working paper to the auditors on that as well, and they, there's a sort of an initial assessment of that, which they were happy with. Um, the same with the IFRS fifteen, revenue from contracts with customers, that's just looking at how sort of our, how we account for our income. And actually, and it's sort of looking at our material income streams, but a lot of our material income streams, we account, so car parking, we can't account for it on a daily basis anywhere, so at year end, we haven't got anything else to account for, so. Um, so again, recognizing the impact of, of that, there isn't anything to report either, so.
Can I just clarify this question of contracts with customers, would it also include any income from any contracts of service that we would, uh, enter into, for instance, uh, performance-related other things associated with?
Yes, it, it could do, it's just making sure that we've got it recognized in the correct financial year.
Okay. So it'd apply to all income streams and?
All income streams, yes.
Correct, Chairman, is it income streams of the council, or the ones that the, the council by selling services provides to other people?
It's, well, it's all income streams, so wherever we get income, right.
Because that doesn't make it, make it, make it, make it clear.
Oh, right, it, it was difficult to get a brief, um, summary of it in one page.
Well, no, if you, sorry, if you look, forgive me, if you look at the box, it says a customer is a service recipient of goods or services. Do you mean rec- recipient or provider?
Um, it.
Yes, recipient.
It's a recipient, yes, same way.
And we're talking about, yes. See, revenue is to be recognized when the service recipient receives the benefit of the goods or services, now.
There's a, um, a sort of five-stage process to this, which I haven't put in here, but it's all about the performance obligation, and we talk about when we recognize the income, so.
So is this talking about when we, we don't do much of it, but we do do some, if we're providing a, a service to someone, it's only the income which we get from providing that, that service that, that makes more sense, so it isn't
Yes.
when, you know, we, when we buy something like mirrors, for example. It's not, that's because they're getting the income, we're getting the services.
Yes, this is our.
And they would be applying this policy to the right to get from us.
Thank, thank you.
But if you've got performance-related contracts, that must be covered?
It, it does, if we're getting income in.
Yeah, yeah.
So, if they, we get, okay, so what, what about the, um, the, the leisure centres, when we have some sort of, um, turnover-based income?
Yes, so we would recognize, um, the income at the end of the financial year, what we'd do at that point. But also, it, it considers materiality, so where we, we touched on materiality in the audit plan, um, we would also assess for that. So it's making sure that, that we've got the income in the right year, so. Let's see, again, I, I did a, a working paper to assess our income stream to put that to the auditors, and I think because we account for our income, like they're requesting under IFRS fifteen anyway, there's, there's no impact anyway we work here, so.
Okay, we're happy.
Just to, Chairman, there's a, there's a, a couple of changes that, uh, you know, to the rules, which, um, uh, I, I think I welcome, but, but like Counselor Mullin, I'm, I'm a little bit confused by the idea of who decides when the benefit has been received, because the benefit's different from a ca- cash changing hands, isn't it, so. But I don't think I need to understand that entirely in my life, perhaps I can just pass, let it pass by, I'd probably never understand it. Um, the one that I prefer is under IFRS, IFRS nine, um, where it looks to me like what they're saying is, it's written there, these need to be assessed for credit risk and appropriate impairment allowance recognized based on the level of risk. So that's the, it's just a bit of tightening up on our investment, uh, but, um, whatever, whatever assets we have and, or what we're investing in, is it?
Well, um, we work to our treasury management framework on all of our investments. Um, a lot of them are with other local authorities anyway, so we don't need to assess any of the risks.
Yeah, absolutely, no, I've, I've seen that, and that's, that's, that's all written down here, thanks, but the, the thing which I had raised last year, and probably the year before, was where it's mentioned in, uh, TMP four, I think it is, if I remember correctly, where, uh, one of our treasury management policies that, and it left the door open for us in future to be able to invest in derivatives, and I said, well, don't we need to have some sort of test as to whether, you know, what derivatives, because not all derivatives are that bad, I guess, uh, but some of them can be very risky, and I think this probably covers that to some extent, does it? You know, this new rule under IFRS, it forces us, if we go down that route, to, to.
Assess it at that point.
Okay, so that's good, isn't it?
Yes.
Brilliant, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor.
Just a quick question, um, just from a point of, of interest, because I'm still fairly new to audit. Um, so the IFRS fifteen revenue from contracts with customers, would that also cover our contracts with tenants as well, and would that, would that not be based in the same kind of?
Well, it, it, it does, but, um, the, this particular standard, um, wouldn't really affect contract with tenant, an individual tenant, because the, it, as Vicky was saying, it's about materiality.
Oh, okay.
An, an individual tenant of this council is not material.
No, so it wouldn't be taken overall in a lump, kind of thing, no, no, okay, thank you.
So that, those are the changes for this year, we don't have to bring the new changes that are coming up in next year's accounts, but for nineteen twenty, it's a bit of a boring year, so I didn't, didn't have much.
It's never boring.
Are you sure?
Much to say on that one. Um, we were going to have IFRS sixteen, which was the lease accounting, but they've postponed that for another year for twenty twenty-one, so I can save that for next year.
I shall look forward to it.
It's, it's taken ten years to get to this point.
It would never happen if we're lucky.
Oh, I think it's coming in twenty twenty-one, so, um, so yeah, so it was just to bring you those.
Thank you very much, and the, the committee notes this position relates to the financial reporting standards. Are we all happy with that? Thank you. So if we could move on now to, um, basically item twelve, income and debt collection policy. I believe this is a new policy, it's covered on page fifty-three to sixty-four, and, uh, because, Peter, you're, you're.
Thank you, Chairman, um, I, I will, so, uh, just a bit of background to, to the policy, um, so across the whole councils, HRA and general fund, uh, combined, um, the council collects around about forty-five million pounds worth of income, um, from fees, charges, rents, um, from different services. And, um, supporting the collection of those rents, there are a number of different systems that are used in different services. Um, and also, across the board corporately, we've got the Agresso system, the Adelante system, which are our financial management, um, softwares that we use. Um, so there's quite a, a different range of, um, IT and administrative processes going on. Um, so the, um, there's, there's quite a, a variety, uh, at the moment, of, uh, standards of customer service, depending on which service you're dealing with in terms of, um, income collection, and more effectively debt collection, the approach to getting the money in. So this, this policy pulls all of that together, all of those different areas together, to form one corporate standard of how we will deal with income. And, um, if we have to put income onto the balance sheet, how we'll deal with it on the balance sheet. Um, and it looks at things like, um, so it's, so most of it's very straightforward administrative process, we're just re-standardizing the way forward. But it's also dealing with the customer service, that would be quite a strong way in terms of making sure that, um, that we have a consistent approach to, um, the way we go about, um, collecting income from people, and more specifically, the difficult side is debt collection. Um, as particularly for, um, customers or clients of the council, where they have more than one, um, debt owing to different services. So that, uh, they, they have, we, we have a standardized approach to of how we deal with an individual, if they're dealing with, say, rents and council tax. So we also look at how we would rank, um, that debt in terms of priority, so we'd, we'd never, um, pursue monies to make somebody homeless, um, in, in advance of, um, or some, in a rear of somebody owing, that person owing money for something less substantial than, than their housing, so we'd never threaten somebody's housing, for instance. So that's really where, where the policy is coming from.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman. Counselor Seaborn, would you like to go first this time?
Thank you, um. Just trying to stick to the, the substance there, a few, few typos in here, but, uh, but yeah, so, um. It'd be good to align clause two point one with three point one, and that they seem to follow on from each other, so we state in three point one that, um, uh, money is going to be collected in a fair proportionate and consistent approach, so in three point one, you define proportionate and you define consistent, you don't define fair, but then in three point one, you introduce transparency, but in the aims of the policy, you don't set out to be transparent, so I think just cross-referencing those two will, will make it even better than it already is. Uh, in, in two point two, I can't help thinking that it might be good to, um, have a specific bullet for, um, housing rent in that, that is a material volume of, of cash, and therefore probably warrants flagging. Um. Three point four, I wonder with a, a very brief reference to, um, endeavoring to obtain customer information, that will be done in compliance with GP, GDPR, just to make sure that we, you know, we, we recognize and that we'll do what we can, but we are sometimes restricted. Consideration, uh, item six, roles and responsibilities, we've now acquired a, a corporate debt and income officer, but he doesn't appear, or she, they don't appear in the roles and responsibilities, so it may be a, a bullet or a subclause there about the, the, the role that the corporate debt and income officer will, uh, fulfill within this, this policy. Might be helpful. Um. And the, probably the, the most substantial thing, uh, on how customers can get help and, and advice in point six, seven, point seven, um. You mention under vulnerable people, the next section, the use of Citizens Advice Bureau. But I can't help thinking that probably all, um, all our debtors could revert to the Citizens Advice Bureau for independent information, because we, we set out what we're going to, what we offer, but we, we're not actually strictly independent, they, they may wish an independent view on that. So can I, I leave that with you to consider?
Can I understand that last point, what, because it says consideration should be made to signposting customers to a partner or organization? What, what is it you're wanting?
Which, which one you, maybe it was.
I'm looking, I'm actually looking at seven point nine.
Yes, uh, seven point nine addresses vulnerable people.
Yeah.
Seven point six, seven point seven are customers in general. And what the point I'm trying to make is that we don't point customers in general to a, a source of independent advice. So I'm, I'm offering that as a point of consideration.
Okay. So would you suggest it's added as a, an additional role?
I, I think, you know, maybe simple date should then become, um, uh, yeah, customers seeking independent advice should, could, should consider.
Okay, can I?
I think officers might wish to comment on that, sorry.
Can I have officers' comments on, on that? Sorry, Counselor, did you want to come in on this issue?
I was, I was going to ask a question, might answer it, and seven point seven does, um, don't lose your home's actually included or referenced as a thing to us?
It, it, um, the, uh, so the, since this draft came into being, the don't lose your homes actually been taken out, the person doesn't exist anymore.
Oh, it doesn't?
No, so, um.
So that needs changing, anyway.
It, it has been changed, and, and, so I should have pointed that out, it's been changed.
Okay, means it's been changed, but not listed to us?
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
Sorry, are, are you saying seven point seven's been removed?
Yes.
In effect.
But, but, okay.
Uh, there'll still, there'll still be signposting, but that particular post won't be, uh, doing the signposting.
So Chairman, I, I think it would be good to pick up Counselor Seaborn to point in, in the replacement for seven point seven, actually.
I agree, yes.
Because, uh, we've got a new contract with the Citizens Advice, and it isn't just about, it isn't just about people, I mean,
Hmm.
vulnerable people or financial difficulties, it's about anybody, so, so I think, actually, we removed seven point seven, that was part of the justification for, um, that, the rethink around how we support customers facing financial difficulty. So can we reword seven point seven along the lines of re- re- signposting to the Citizens Advice?
Signposting generally, but, but they're all not vulnerable.
Yes, generally, because there are, there are also some, um, some very good, um, debt, debt collections.
No, that'd be fine, it's just stressing the independence, that's all.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry, did you want to come back on the other ten points that Counselor Seaborn?
They're, they're actually all fat points, and we will, uh, bring them in.
Counselor Seaborn, can, can, then we'll work down this. Sorry, Counselor Mullin, I thought you.
We have one change. Um, I just thought, actually, if you're not good to distinguish between the vulnerable and the, and the, and the others, then you just want to have one general review, it's probably quite a good idea to show that you know what a vulnerable person is, so I just wanted to ask whether, I think Citizens Advice Bureau is now Citizens Advice, that's the correct term, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
Is the money advice service particularly for the vulnerable, or is that also a general, um, you know, support to, to anyone, vulnerable or not? You mentioned it in seven point nine.
It's all. It's, it, a, a, anybody, really.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I, I think.
Yes, I mean, I, I'm entirely, except Glyn's point, I think, when I see that seven point seven, seven point eight, seven point nine, perhaps need to be tidied down and, and send a hand of your hand message.
But Chairman, can, may I just put, take you back to five point two in that case? Because if you're going to do things with seven points, seven eight, nine, then you're going to do things with five point two without knowing you've done it.
Yes, indeed.
So just to make sure that you don't, um, you know, sort of end up, uh, mis, um. Okay, if someone wants to make a note, um, that, that, just, just to circle, we, somebody must have borrowed my errant computer, because, um, it's been putting in spaces just like mine does, where you don't want them. The six point three, you've got a load of spaces added in, you know, you've also got, uh, seven point six weird spaces put in as well. Uh, and then seven point eleven, just so that you can pick those up if you make a couple of changes.
Just because it's been justified, isn't it?
Yeah, and, but it, it may be there's an extra space, somebody's typed in, that's helped to it.
It's justified, it's variable spacing.
I went through it, then, I've got a lot of them, but I didn't get all of them.
My computer does it to me, it's driving me nuts, yeah.
Counselor Mullin, have you? Counselor, Counselor.
Thank you, um, I, again, can I, if I could just bring you back to five point two, uh, just on the point of view of, of the worded, um, customers should be aware that these recovery timetables, I presume the recovery timetables are those set out in five point one. Am I reading it correctly?
Yes.
Yes, it is, so it's those ones there, because it's, it's not quite from a, a layperson reading it, it's, it's not clear that five point one is the recovery timetable, so perhaps it just needs to be a little bit extra clarification on that, and I agree totally with, um, about the seven point eight. You know, the council needs to be mindful when dealing with all customers, and then obviously listing the, the vulnerable, um, as customers. as customer, as, uh, the Council Mullin has said, and, um, I think that was about it, thank you.
Yes, if I may, I think it isn't clear what the, what the timet- timetable is. So possibly there needs to be a paragraph between five one and five two, as Council want to spelling that out. I think it just mentions three months is standard somewhere, isn't it? Peter, what is your view as to the standard?
Sorry, I, um, I didn't realise we put anything in terms of the specific timetable in here, as, as in that can vary over time as we, uh, assess our debt positions and, and, um, res- responses to dealing with people. So we need, we need flexibility rather than putting, putting in here.
So, I mean, um, is it, what would happen is that when you become aware of a customer who's got a problem, do you then communicate with them a particular recovery time?
Directly, yes, we call it special arrangements with customers.
Well, perhaps that can be made clearer, because these is quite a specific word, and you can't remember which.
Chairman, I just thought if you were to change the title at number five at the top of the page on fifty nine to debt recovery process and flexible timetables, then the rest of it makes sense. You would not have to change anything.
Well, we'll just take out.
Because it tells you that there's flexible timetables.
And timetables, to be honest, there is.
Can, can we keep our points fairly high level? Because some of these points we should have tried to make before the meeting. We are talking about policy, if we're not careful, it won't be able to go forward.
It's going to cancel.
We'd ask for a rewrite, um.
I think that, Chairman, we've sort of caught the sentiment, a really helpful comment, thank you, we'll try and get that into there, because the, the timetable point's a really important one. And, um, in some ways, actually, we don't, with some, with some groups of debtors, we don't want flexible timetables. We want rigid and consistent ones, and, uh, because it helps us when we take, take a blue court. And, um, Chairman, let's make one final point, which is just to, just sort of build on Peter's introduction, which is paragraph five in the actual report itself, so page fifty four. Um, one of the, um, this sort of links back to the, one of the questions from members to the, to Grant Thornton earlier about follow-up on recommendations, and, and this actually builds on last year's recommendation, which this committee considered September, which, uh, in July, sorry, which was, um, to s- sort of strengthen our approach to debts. So that was the origin of this, in fact, and, and Peter and Vicky.
Debt recovery and write-offs last year, we had the audit coming, yes.
Yes, yes, so, so Peter and Vicky have picked up on the auditing, uh, recommendation and, uh, and built this out of it.
Okay, I, can I raise one point on there that, um, um, reluctant to raise it in some respects, but we do have a group of people, including someone who might be resettled. And I'm just wondering whether they fall neatly into a, a classification of those who have obvious difficulty in understanding speaking, reading English. And are they vulnerable people?
That's actually covered.
And do we have this, is this from somewhere else, or have we drawn up that list? Um.
It's an internal list that's been put together.
Look, by the way, there, there isn't a standard one.
No, no.
I think we should be careful on, on that, on that list. Um, and we're more used to, to putting a general comment on there, those who first, first language is not English, rather than, um. What you're doing is you're alerting people, saying this could be a vulnerable person, right? If they're in this situation, not that they are vulnerable.
Is that the final bullet?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, for split, six to two.
I mean, you're affected, you're affectedly, you're saying they could be considered vulnerable. You're allowed to call them vulnerable if they, they have difficulty understanding. I think, I just warn you to be very cautious on that, and perhaps make sure that it's, um, it's covered by your service people who, who handle these difficulties. And I'm thinking of specifically of people, the, the people that we will bring into the county that we need special attention, and otherwise. Again, I'm not asking to make those, uh, lists, but whether that perhaps the last one ought to be, it is a catch-all to make sure you haven't forgotten anybody. Would you just have a look at that, in, in, in that respect? Members, can we, are we happy that this goes forward and that we ask, um, Peter to basically make the changes that we've got down with Amy, so that these can go in the minutes that go before council? Agreed?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, in that case, I'll make the, the formal recommendation then, is that to recommend the Audit Committee endorses the income and debt collection policy, and remake it, and recommends its adoption to council, but we want to put in there. Yes, please, yes, we'll put as we've, as we've meant, thank you. Are we agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Okay, revised anti-fraud and corruption policies, pages sixty nine to one hundred and thirty-six. Are we letting you, we're going to let you go?
That's all right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Gail, you're leading on this.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, this is the, the revised anti-fraud and corruption policy, and this is presented to committee as, um, a block of all the policies we have that relate to, uh, anti-fraud and corruption. This is not the way that members of staff have access to these. These stand alone in their own right within our internet, and all members of staff have access to these. Um, this revision, as I say, these are, these come to you every second year. I look at them every year. Um, I generally update job script, uh, sorry, job title names, et cetera. But this year, we've had a major review of the anti-money laundering policy. And therefore, as you can see in the document, there's a huge area of red, which obviously highlights where the, um, major changes have been made. I'm not sure if there's anything else wrong.
Could you explain the, the anti-money laundering, what's, is that our review of it? Or has there been legal changes, legislation changes, creature brought by the bank?
This is actually, um, this particular policy actually comes under, um, Peter's auspice. Um, but it has been, um, a major overhaul that has been done. Um, but there has been a change in legislation which has instigated and supported the changes. I don't know, Peter, if you wanted to say anything about that?
Um, I, I, I can't really, I'm all turtle on that. There hasn't been anything hugely, um, different up in point two in the legislation. Um, the rewrite has really made it more readable.
So we'll choose this?
As an opportunity.
Opportunity.
Okay, I, I'll dance it down, make it more readable.
But the most significant, um, change has been the money laundering, terrorist financing, and transfer of funds, um, regulation two thousand and seventeen. So this takes into, um, account the changes, um, of that.
Members, Council Mullin, I had this hand up first, Council Hyman, I'll come to you.
Just to get some con- context, uh, looking at page one oh five, things that we're going to want times may include.
Yes.
What historically has been our experiences over the last couple of years of people trying to do this?
Um, very minimal. We have, we haven't had instance, many, well, we've been in that.
There's very little opportunity with the businesses, business that we have to, uh, for people to get involved in money laundering. It's, we, we'd, um, the biggest of opportunities really would be the, uh, investment properties, but are so locked down through the due diligence that we do, that, um, it, it's hardly a lot, you know, ever happens.
And one of the other areas would probably be right-welling, where people are actually buying our broadcasts. We have to make sure we do due diligence and do governance checks to make sure we're aware of how that money has been obtained before, obviously, then, then sell it.
The other opportunity would be through the supplier chain. Um, we do, um, we do financial checks, so we know who our suppliers are, of all, all major contracts. So, um, but the opportunity for any significant money laundering, it potentially would be significant. Um, it, other than that, it would be fine.
Would someone be able to pay his rent in advance in cash to you?
They can, yes, so.
In cash?
Yeah. We, we're saying here that over five thousand pounds is, uh, you know, et cetera. And for somebody to pay five thousand pounds in, in a month would be quite a trustless.
Yeah, but I'm just wondering, you know, whether the verification goes of somebody wanting to bring cash in to pay for the house, but you've already done the vetting of them.
Hmm. Um, so if a tenant, a tenant, the only reason a tenant would bring, um, rent apart from our investment properties, which would be interesting, bringing that kind of money in cash, I, I think they'd be intercepted along the way, so why? Um, but for our, any of our housing tenants to bring, uh, to have to pay us that amount of cash, they would be in arrears. And we may consider the, the overall value of the rental areas, it's, it's very low, very low risk, definitely. They're not, they're not particularly significant values.
So, so.
Can, can.
Peter Hyman, just finishing off that point, do we take cash anymore? Where can you have cash?
Yes, we do, yes, absolutely, we will take cash, we don't encourage cash, we encourage electronic banking, but we do take cash, yeah.
Well, how would somebody do that? I didn't know that we had any cash tills anymore.
Oh, we, we have a cashier in, in, in the front premises, if somebody was to pay cash.
Do you have, do we tell, we have a left nowhere?
No, 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 no.
You don't have a report.
Okay, I, I don't think anybody knew that, that there was still a cash till, where is it?
Well, we don't have a cash office anywhere, um, and I can't disclose where the till is, obviously, you know, because we're, we're podcasting, to be fair.
So you can pay, but we won't tell you where? Yeah, right.
But partic- but particularly in the circumstances that Peter has used in example, it's somebody trying to pay the rent. If that person was going to court, uh, regarding vulnerable areas, you would take the cash to pay off the rent.
Absolutely.
To prevent them going.
Council, sorry, of.
Okay, I don't want to milk it, I just thought, we, we've got a cash till.
No, we can't tell you.
Okay, just a, just a couple of things, in, in point four point eight, just for clarification, where it says, um, uh, result dismissal, the chief executive or strategic director, should that be directors? Or is there just one?
Four point.
Four point eight?
Page seventy four.
Sorry, page seventy four, sorry, chief executive or stra- strategic directors, should it be?
In good legal terms, the singular would also include the plural.
Okay, it's just in other places, it's directors, I just wondered if it was meant to be both. I felt like Richard Seaborn then, actually, finding a trading ass. And also, um.
It is plural, yeah.
Yes, it's plural. And also on page one hundred and thirteen, um, you might want to find in a space after seven point ten, because it leads on into seven point eleven. Um, but, um, on the, um, you, you were speaking about cash payments. Um, and could you just explain to me, so we've got, um, whenever a transaction involves a cash payment to ten thousand or more, and then on seven point two twelve, it goes, it mentions about fifteen thousand euros, and I just, it's just, again, if you could just explain to me
Could you just bring me back to the page you're talking about?
Oh, sorry, page one hundred and thirteen.
One hundred and thirteen, so.
Seven point one, one and seven point one two.
So, um, Council tells us that seven eleven is a description, that, that's the legislation.
Right, so for us.
It's description of the reg- legislature, plus it's five thousand.
Okay, yes, okay.
And, and seven, seven twelve is, uh, it's, it's, it's what the legislation says.
And seven point one two then is again the same, yeah. Okay, thank you.
It is in euros?
Sorry?
Ten thousand pounds, eleven, fifteen thousand euros and twelve.
Yeah, it's, it's, the legislation says, but it won't be an issue after, I can't know it started, but.
Has it? Mr. Chairman?
So that's just copied and pasted from the legislation?
It's the legislation, yeah.
Thank you.
Right. Oh, members, are we, sorry, Council Hyman?
Well, I, I did try to concentrate on the changes that were made and, uh, and, and have a look and see if I thought if there's anything messed up there, but I got distracted by four point nine on page seventy four, Chairman, you'll see why. It says there's a need to ensure that any investigative process is not misused as therefore an abuse, such as raising unfounded malicious allegations may be dealt with as a disciplinary matter. I got slightly hung up on the grammar. I, I then read four ten, and then when I read four eleven, it said the council must ensure that any investigative, et cetera, et cetera, which is exactly the same as four point nine, if power a couple of words. I thought we ought to delete one of them. Seventy four. Four point nine, four point eleven, a little bit close to each other, that if we're changing things, we should do that at the same time, maybe, Chairman. Um, I, I shall make no further comments on my own personal experiences in that regard. Um, page eighty-two, very top, untrue allegations. If an allegation is made in good faith but is not confirmed by the investigation, no action may be taken, uh, where the originator, um, disciplinary action may be considered. And this takes me back to the question which I really would like to try and find an answer to one day. Um, which is where, who is ultimately responsible? Who decides whether something is a true or untrue allegation? If someone's going to turn around and say, no, we're not allowed to discuss that now, no, we're not going to talk about that, and always does it, how and who is, is responsible ultimately to, to making these decisions? Because if nobody makes a decision, it's pointless policy.
Can I just make a point, are we not just talking about the revisions within this policy?
Well, what revisions should be, I was thinking on there.
As in the rate revisions, rather than the, the actual basis of the policy itself?
We, we are, we, we do have a policy here. Um, Council Hyman, I just, I just let officers respond to that, because my understanding is we're talking about this in respect not of the monitoring of the process, we're talking about it in the context of fraud investigation.
Mm-hmm.
And this is specifically for fraud investigation. And who would decide whether it's, uh, factitious or allegation, I guess that question?
Uh, fundamentally, I would do the, I would do the work and, um, gather the evidence, but the decision as to whether, how it moved forward would be made by myself in the section on page one also.
Okay, that's what I did, protected, that's good. Council Mullin, is it related to this?
It is, and to clarify, by the Council Hyman, the point here is not whether the allegation is true or untrue, that's, that's, that's a ma- matter of fact. It's just whether an untrue allegation was made in good faith. Um, this is completely a different question.
And that would depend on the evidence that I was able to take to make a decision as to.
I think we've discussed this enough, if we could go on to the changes.
Yes.
Okay, Council Seaborn, come back to it, Council Hyman, if you.
Yeah, sorry, Chairman, if I, if I can finish on that, page eighty-six, I've noted, um, and, and I do appreciate that we're talking about the investigating offices. Um, down at the bottom, paragraph nine, uh, the officer, this is the investigating officer, um, who may be external, a consultant or whatever, but will be expected to maintain a high level of knowledge of relevant legislation, procedure, procedures to enable the duties to be performed at the required standard. Um, that, uh, how do we ensure, it was difficult to phrase the question, how do we ensure that that is going to be the case? Because, you know, if we've got an investigation where the, uh, the investigating officer says, I don't know what the legislation is and that's not within my remit to look at it, surely that would be in breach of, um, of, of number nine there, where we would be expected to know in order to make this decision?
Okay, can the officer just comment a little?
Yes, as part of, uh, the investigating officer's role, as part of her role, is to know the legislation that he'll be dealing with, if he or she, to enable them to fulfil the duties they're expected to fulfil as an investigating officer.
Okay. Can we, can we put the thunder changes in person? Council, Council Seaborn?
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Um, yeah, just a trivia, page sixty-nine, the adoration's gone, I'm going to break. Page sixty-nine, the page numbering.
Would it be, will you, will you submit, please?
Yeah, I'll, it's, right. Uh, of slightly more substance, um, page seventy-six at the top, you introduce, uh, what's to do with the new policy, the criminal records check and disclosure policy. And where can we actually find that? Because I, I went on to the. Yeah. At the very top, you introduce criminal records check and disclosure policy. And where can we actually find that? Because I, I went on the, uh, the Waverley website, so I wasn't able to locate it anywhere.
For C and B.
Is it? So we can, we can send that to you, because it's, um, an internal document for, for our HR team.
Yeah.
And it has to be named internal, does it?
Um.
Well, it, it should just say that. The use is internal, so it, it's, so we don't put it on our website.
The use is internal, so it, it's, so we don't put it on our website.
It's like, on the, on the website, some entry, or internal entry.
But we put this policy on, I'm excited.
So, it is, or this is, yes, yeah.
Mm, okay.
I, I thought it was on our, I, I thought it was on the councillors' page, uh, where, where we've got all the stuff, where we've got our interests, where we declared interest and things. I thought there was something on there where, where people could see what gifts we'd received, or what we'd said we'd received.
Uh, so this is the criminal records check and disclosure policy, so that's, that's, that's something we use for, um.
Yes, yes, this is the policy.
It's something we use for, uh, recruitment.
I really, really agree in the principle that if you're putting something on, in, in the public domain, all the, all the cross references should either be state.
Yeah.
You're either going to find them or it should be a clear statement that they're not available because this is. Um, and it's, uh, the other points I've got on page one two six, so they're not changes, but, um, there is actually a, an omission in item four, the last sentence of item four there, um. And it's.
One, two, six.
One, two, six, do you?
Yes, page one, two, six, uh, item four, the last sentence, and they should be authorized, be authorized, you're all approved. But, uh, on the previous item, I think that this is a, this, this is a point of substance, um, members having to, item three, members having to register any gift they've actually received. Do we not have a provision for declaring offers of, um.
Unrefused, yeah.
Uh, and refused, I think that, I, I am certainly, I was certainly brought up to do that, because sometimes that has, that has more substance and, and potential for flagging down dubious behaviour than actually admitting the fact that you've received a twenty-five quid voucher.
That was in monitoring officers' report, um, gifts accepted and gifts refused.
Yeah, okay, so this just is, uh, accepted.
Yeah.
So I think, uh, an amendment just to make include.
Mm, okay.
What if you get a bunch of flowers from the council and they're obviously cost more than twenty-five quid because they won't fit in your place and you have to give them to your mother?
You have to fill out a form, uh, with your registered interests, yeah, uh.
Right, actually, it says fifty.
The members have hired for the staff.
From the brown recycling bin.
Sorry, that's all, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Right, so I can't.
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, members, have you all raised the, the points you wish to raise?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, subject two, and councillor Seaborn or any other member who would like to point out, um, correction, minor point, incident point. Then can we put to this committee that has recommended that we endorse and re- the revised policy and recommends that can, to council, that it be approved? And that officers are instructed to cascade using suitable media to publicise these documents to the appropriate recipients. Something we put in last time, which was this positive obligation to make sure that everyone understood it, um, including members, of course. Are we all agreed?
Thank you, about fifteen percent pay rise, if we're gonna do that.
Okay, now, now we've got Gail warmed up, we can go on to item fourteen, the proposed audit plan for two thousand nineteen and twenty, and Gail, you're gonna introduce this item as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes, you have in front of you the proposed, um, annual audit plan for two thousand and nineteen, twenty. And as in previous years, I have completed the risk management process in, as, um, as a, in another point of view. And just to give you an overview of the process I complete, I consult with, uh, heads of services, strategic directors, I complete, I com- um, audit risk assessment. Come up with, I already have in place an audit universe, which are all the auditable areas we have with the council, these are then risk assessed. And I then come up with the audit plan. And you'll see in the audit plan, there are some, um, I've given a bit of background to the introduction, uh, regarding what the standards and. Obviously linking into our strategic objectives as well, regarding place, people and prosperity, and. For this coming year, we have a few years where we've been given assures, some of the reviews relating to health and safety, which I know that the audit committee are very strong about. Regarding safety, regional checks, asbestos, and this year, what I have decided to do is that that, those three elements will be included as one, one big area. And because, as you can appreciate, there is, there is quite a lot of interlinkage between those three areas.
Sorry, it always, that always sets me up.
And the audit committee, I hope we're happy to see, I've also included, uh, an area regarding air quality. And this will be looking at the changes we've made regarding the issues we've had, looking at the process we've now implemented, looking at how that process is now working. Uh, around the whole governance arrangement, you know, regarding, uh, air quality. And, um, I welcome any comments that members have on the proposed plan.
Councillor Townsend, would you like to go first, or would you defer to?
Um. Only one thing, um, within the corporate objectives down in the housing, kitchen and bathrooms replacement programme. Um, the other day, we, we were mentioning about doing replacement windows, but I presume as we've put that off now, that doesn't come into that area, that that's been, that will go into next year's, yes, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Haven't really got anything else to bring up, thank you.
Councillor Hyman.
Just, just quickly on the, to add on the, uh, air quality issue from page one hundred and forty-seven, um. The re- the review, I think that you're saying, Gail, that is intended to be on the monitoring and reporting side of it.
Yes.
And, um, I would say, chairman, that I, I don't think that you can really carry out a proper review of, um, air quality and, and, and have some of this meaningless. Unless it also includes the air quality action plan, because that is the, the whole point of the, um, of the exercise, so to speak, the whole point of the law. Is that you will have a plan that, um, that, you know, reacts to and corrects the issues or seeks to correct over time, um, and, and the two are inextricably linked, you can't take one from the other.
Could you ask councillor Hyman a question? I mean, I think this is a good question.
Will, uh, well, can, uh, chairman, can the committee, would the committee support, um, the remit of that, of the air quality? Well, it's not another investigation, because we have plenty of those, but, uh, whatever you want to call it, the remit to include the, um, uh, the air quality action plan itself.
Just to put your mind at rest there, councillor Hyman, the, the review, as I said, will be looking at the whole governance arrangements around air quality. And my start, the starting point would actually be the action plan that's actually been drawn up, looking at how we've actually moved on, how, how we've, what we have achieved against that action plan. As well as how we're monitoring and how we're reporting.
And you would be reporting this after next April, or, or would this be something you would be doing after this April starts? Do you know, I mean, is, is this is for the financial year, starting April, is it?
At the moment, um, I think air quality is down for, it's either quarter one or quarter two. Yeah, so it's the first half of the year, off the top of my head, I haven't got the, um.
Don't worry about that now, don't worry about that now, I mean, as, as far as I'm concerned, that may have been done yesterday, not in the future, so, when it's in the future, doesn't really matter.
Well, I did, I, I, I felt it was prudent to wait for, to be significant time for the new arrangements to actually bed in, so that it was sufficient information for us to look at.
I find it difficult, because of the police investigation still ongoing, for us to move any further, had the Hampshire County Council team of auditors in, we.
I don't think that would actually depend on the work that I'll be doing, because I'm looking at providing assurance to management and to members, that the systems that we've now got in place is actually working as we would wish it to be working.
Okay, was that not within the remit of the Hampshire audits team that came in in the first part? I thought, that might be.
That my, the work that I'll be doing would be totally separate to the work that, um, the auditors did to, to regarding the incident.
I don't think the latest names are, don't worry, okay, chairman, please.
So, could, for, for clarity, can I just come and ask, can I, you will take the recommendations out of the audit to make sure they've been implemented?
Yes, of course, yeah.
Yes, that you wanted to clarify, does, does that help you, councillor Hyman?
Yes, I think so, um, for now, thank you.
And Gail has actually seen the audit report?
Of the original investigation, yes, I am.
I think we've seen it, haven't we? Haven't we seen it yet?
No, but relying on Gail to, you know, that's been.
Pop, pop by the office when she's not looking, okay, chairman, went.
Thank you, anyone else, questions, councillor Seaborn?
Yeah, just a minor point, I mean, I'm very happy with the, uh, list of things you've chosen, that's, that's good. Um, before this gets published, could you just take a look at the, uh, the wording of on, on page hundred and forty-three, the first item, the conformance, the second sentence there. And something's gone awry with, uh, punctuation, I think it's very hard to understand exactly what it's saying.
Is undergone really meant to be undertaken?
Well, yes, yes.
Or under, or, or just simply under, under, undertook? And the audit, yes, it's, it's.
Can we let them see the comments?
I think the whole thing just needs looking at, it's, I think, does it make sense?
It makes sense.
I think, no, they were the ones who were actually the ones who were subject to it.
And then, yes, they were subject to the.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I understood that, but as you go on through that sentence, the situation knitting that makes it very difficult to understand what it's saying.
But you would give it, give it a comma or do you?
I think you're gonna be very busy.
I have actually, that's, I'm actually.
Just one, one member at the time, please.
Thank you.
Have you finished? So, councillor Townsend, do you want to come back, or ask councillor Monner, councillor Monner, yeah, councillor Hyman?
So, chairman, this is one, there's another one that's going to, uh, council in three weeks' time, or four months' time, isn't it, so, um, what, are we on fourteen? Is it fourteen?
Yeah, it doesn't go beyond until it comes to.
Until you connect it.
Well, doesn't it, I sort of, I made a note that we were making a decision, I threw a star against it.
But, so, so the audit, this is, does make a decision to approve this, so it doesn't need to be on the table.
Okay, um, fourteen, no, uh, politically against that, happy with that, thank you, chairman.
All right, so the recommendations to the audit committee is that it comment and approve the draft return audit plan for two thousand nineteen, twenty, as attacked dynamics one, are we all agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you, we do review this each, at each of our meeting, attempt at status and everything else, so if something comes up, we have the opportunity of, of pressing that, would you?
But that's with, with the comments, with the comments made by councillor Seaborn, I'm sorry.
Item sixteen. And, I think, I think, sorry, sorry, fifteen, I was, I didn't, I didn't further forward, item fifteen.
Fifteen? Okay. Thank you, chairman.
Page one five one.
This is the progress on the internal audit plan for eighteen ninety, and on annex one. Um, I'd just like to point out that the two items at the top, uh, of the page, the schedule, I've got my page on this one, put these up in the chat. And you'll see the user account management procedures, which is an IT review, and the, um, IT technical, which is network designed to prevent and detect malicious software. Uh, just to confirm that those reviews are going to be completed in, you know, um, the eleventh of March, two thousand and ninety, so that'll be done by the end of, the end of March. It's a slight update, and. Members will notice the community infrastructure levy review, which I had planned for this year, due to the, it not being adopted until the first of March, there was obviously a, not sufficient activity for me to audit. So there is a request as one of the recommendations for that to be deferred till next, uh, next year. And it's other reviews, the only other one that, uh, still to ha- still to have a date agreed, or the head of service is, um, on, on board with the review. Is a review that's going to be done on Bryant Wells, but all the other reviews are approved, yes, are, are going to be achieved by the end of March.
Okay, yeah, could you just summarise, um, where we are with any days that we don't use within the contract contract, will you be able to carry those over?
Um, generally, the only days I would be, uh, allowed to carry forward are the community infrastructure levy, any days that have not been used.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, that's part of my budget, and when they go back into the pot.
Okay, thank you for that, so councillor Monner.
A quick question on that, before I leave, on the point, they take years back into the pot, you mean, simply it's, it's unspent budget, so.
And it goes into the central pot, then be spent by someone else that's been in betterment.
Okay, fine, thank you. Um, secondly, I thought you were being very restrained to ask in item two, only for a seven day defer, is that a type of something, well. If you look at, um, page one five one, I'm quite under, under, it said there, it's for defer of review related to C I L, it's seven days.
Yes.
Seven days?
Seven days, yes.
It's not the referral, it's the duration of the, uh.
It's the duration.
So it's the length of the review?
Yes, it's seven days.
Um, as we're talking about, so it was completely confusing, I mean, you actually had to mention a number of days at all.
I don't have to, I did, because obviously that, that's, that's a monetary.
And I was gonna say, in, in the actual recommendation, it might as well to, you've got in item one, prove the deferral of the review to nineteen twenty, is a view relating to C I L.
C I L, yes.
I think that's quite useful to put it in there, you might think of deferring everything, but, um, no, I'll, I'll pardon that, it would be usual, efficient process, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can, can I just ask, councillor Hyman, you, you, you mentioned the, um, review of, of Bryant Wells, and that was a twenty eighteen, nineteen priority? Yeah, a high priority, was it twenty eighteen, nineteen?
It was high risk, it seemed, I, when I assessed it, it was high risk, but it was already, it was already agreed it was going to be covered in quarter three, four.
Right, and, and that runs out in the weeks' time?
End of March, yes, and the review will be done by the end of March.
Will it?
Oh, yes.
Um, I, I have a number of authorities, well, you know, from, from, uh, it's a few some of the works, uh, that, that there are going to be changes to this scheme, have you, have you, is there anything you can tell us about that? Because if this is going to be, you know, significant changes to this.
I haven't done any background at all to the.
I'm just wondering how we can do this, I don't see it happening, you see, I mean, if someone says to me that Bryant Wells is gonna get looked into, I think that'll be the day, isn't that never gonna happen, same as with Memorial Hall.
I think, if you look at the detail, then the, what the review's going to be covering is assurance on the controls, review the risk of laws and Waverley's legal obligation. That's what the review will be focused on, it's obviously not going to be looking at the completion of the, of the development.
I would think that that, uh, is, is entirely dependent upon, uh, because the situation the council is in, the council is in effect now tied to a contract, and. If the developer comes along and says, hey, we're making changes here, um, you, you know, we've got to change our systems and everything and go along with it, because there is very little chance of. This council ever turning around and saying, no, stop what you're doing, we'll get someone else to do it, we're not in a position to even tell them that, are we, realistically?
I think we would, I think we, before we could come in any further, we would need to see the terms of reference, and we, we don't have that, are you requesting sight of those terms of reference, councillor?
Um, is it gonna help me if I do, uh, um, would, would, is, is there a sufficient detail in there to, for, for me to know?
Well, I think.
I mean, I, I know, for instance, that, um, there, there has been a section, not a section, I should say, a supplement to the contract that has never been made public. Um, and other documents I asked for, I haven't been able to get hold of anyway, so I don't honestly know whether I'll get anywhere with it, chairman. I'd like some assurances that we can look into this, and it's gonna be within the next fortnight, it'll be brilliant.
I think it's important we clarify what the review, what the review is ba- is about, um.
As I say, I mean, maybe coun- councillor Hyman has more information than I have with regarding what progress is, is, is or is not being made on, uh, the development. But I would then have to have my contract auditors to actually go out and establish that when they're actually drawing up the assignment plan sheet. And it could then, could then be, not that I'm saying it will do, that actually, it may be when it gets deferred.
I, I, then.
But at the moment, the plan is.
But at the moment, you're saying you're gonna do it in the next couple of weeks?
Yes, yes.
Really, wow, um.
And the reason I say that is because as at the end of March, we have a new contractor, so therefore the new contract, loan contractor has to complete all their work by the end of, end of March.
Right, okay, well, I mean, I trust you implicitly, Gail, so I would be very happy if, um, I, I will give you information that I have as soon as possible. So that you can make sure that, um, that. so that you can make sure that, um, that...
I can meet my...
You can ask the questions, anyway. That's what you need to do, is ask the questions. Thanks, Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Seaborn?
Just in the same vein, I'd be good to have assurance that the Investment Board and Commercial Investment Venture work's going to get completed in the entire figure this month. So that's how Pride Wells do seem to be two very important pieces of work. Thank you.
So, Chairman, can I just add, because I did mention, have we got any, um, okay. Situation up until a couple of weeks ago was, was going to be a sort of investigation, a scrutiny committee, which was Andy McValley's Community Scrutiny Committee. We're going to be looking at the Memorial Hall, um, and the, you know, the whole process. And that was pulled from the agenda at the last minute, or at least it was pulled from the agenda, anyway, I don't know what minute it was. Um, and I don't, don't know whether we're ever going to see that, or whether it likely happened. Have we had an investigation? Or has that been through internal audit, or would that have been something else?
No, there has, um, there has been an internal audit review of the project, and how the project was...
I see we've got one here on, on first page of annex one, third up from the bottom is Memorial Hall, and it's...
Um, but regarding, I, I'm not sure from what you're talking about, Mr. Hyman, as to what you were, you'd be expecting. Uh, because we, we act on the data as a project, as to how the project was managed and the outcomes, and that review has been completed as an, as an internal audit, looking at the, the process that was completed.
But that isn't feeding in, you're not expecting the work you've done to feed into the community O and S, where they would...
No, not that I'm aware of. No, a bit more state here.
Why don't we do that?
Well, I think you need to take this, I think we need to take this up separately, Counsel Hyman. I mean, if there is a concern there that involves the Audit Committee, I'd be happy for it to come, come back to it, but I think if you're asking us, you know, to...
No, I'm thinking of overall governance and, you know, we're there to look after the residents, and they're interested, and they think, hang on, we've done an investigation, we spent time doing it, yet it hasn't come forward here, and we're now told it's not going to.
I'm not aware of a document being pulled from the O and S committee. I don't believe that's necessarily something for this, for this committee to, to review. But if you've got a concern over the audit of the Memorial Hall, um, Gail's turned out that we are of doing one. Um, but I think the issue of the, whatever you expect it to bring into the O and S committee would be separate. And I presume that finance would be providing information for, for that item.
And the financial information required, Chairman?
Sorry?
Whatever financial information required.
Yes.
All I can say is what I was told on the phone by Committee Services, I think it was Fiona, I don't, it might have been her, but I think it was Fiona.
Have you asked them why it's been pulled?
Well, the information I was given over the telephone at the time was, uh, something along the lines of, we are still talking to the contractors along that line, or something like that, so we can't bring them to the committee, you know, and if we're still talking to contractors, you know, how does that tie in with the audit, I'm thinking?
Well, the audit can also be done at a point in time.
Yes, exactly, but we wouldn't have reached a conclusion, presumably.
Yeah, to give you some assurance, the audit was actually looking at the process was followed, not regarding any contractual obligations or disputes, et cetera. It's in the, the review didn't cover that area. It was regarding the processes, the, the process it was followed.
That's very helpful. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Right. Will I go to recommendations? Okay. Yeah, we've just made a small, I'll try and read out the amended one. Approves the deferral of the review relating to SIL to twenty nineteen twenty, and notes the status of the two thousand eighteen nineteen audit plan as attached in annex one. Are we all agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Right, item sixteen. Focus on the implementation of internal audit recommendations. Okay?
Yes, again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In front of the committee is the recommendations that are either due for implementation by thirty-first of March or are overdue. As you will see from the schedule, all are due for implementation by the thirty-first of March. But one head of service recognises that due to changes, he has requested dynamics two, an extension to the implementation date. And this relates to a housing O and S committee carrying out a review. And I think it's self-explanatory within his justification as to why he's asking for his extension.
Members. I don't know whether Counselor Townsend wants to expound on the head of the O and S review into stigma in social housing, basically has delayed this. Were you aware of that?
Um, I wasn't aware that it had, had delayed this, other than reading it in here. I wasn't aware that that was one of the, um, uh, the knock-on effects of the, the review, to be honest. Um, but the, the housing allocation scheme, it was clear from our work that people were unaware of the allocation scheme in the wider public. Um, and therefore, that has obviously caused, um, some additional work to be carried out around this topic. So I think I would welcome that additional work, because I think it's important that the allocation scheme is understood by the wider public, because we have got, um, a reducing housing register numbers, but, um, there is, you know, additional need there. And, um, the, the thought was that people felt that their need wasn't strong enough to go on the housing needs register, and they were thinking there were people more deserving than them, so I think it's important that the allocation policy is clear, so that people know
Could I then, if I ask members to consider whether it's appropriate that this is deferred until the thirty-first of December? I mean, it's quite a long deferral.
It is a long deferral, yes.
Um, I mean, we've done this before, but, I mean, I can't see any evidence here particularly, other than what's been requested. I don't know whether you have any additional information, Gail?
Uh, no, I, as I say, the, um, the discussion I had with head, head, head of service, he felt it was of greater benefit to actually make sure that the allocation scheme meets the needs, obviously taking on board the work that's been done, uh, by the working...
Well, the work's been done now, and I would have thought that if we delay this, um, till June or July, it would have been sufficient to, rather than right to the end of the year. I'm sorry, it's a bit too convenient, it's a bit like nineteen and nine, and, you know, it's thirty-first of December.
Chairman, may I just, um, comment that we know that we've got, that, uh, I, I obviously appreciate that everything is Counselor Townsend's fault, I'm not surprised to hear that, but members are surprised to hear, we know her well. But this is going, we could well have new O and S committees, we have no idea what they, who they might consist of or anything, that they will, the summer will be upon us. Things will then move into September, when we will have O and S meetings that this will go to.
I think the work's been done, but can you just...
It has to go to O and S, won't it?
Well, to be, to be honest, the work hasn't been done on this piece of, this piece of work.
No, but the O and S work that's caused this, has that been done unpublished?
Yes, that's been done, and Richard's presenting the paper to the executive on the twelfth.
Sorry, Counselor Hyman.
Well, I, I just think that, you know, realistically, we're looking at, the soonest that officers, if they work through the summer holidays, um, for their extra fifteen percent, that we're going to get, this coming through in September at the earliest, um, in, in that round, and it would come through to, it's the October council meeting round, isn't it? So, and, and then the next one is the December. So, I don't think it is that far off.
Well, no, it's, it's the audit, it's the audit requirement here, we're talking, we're talking, because the O and S work's already been done, and Richard's going to be taking it to executive in the next week or so.
Twelfth, March.
Well, so it's a question of how long does he need to come back to here to tell us who's going to complete it?
So, uh, sorry, my fault. You're absolutely right. So when's our audit meeting that this is going to come to then?
Well, I mean, I think you'll be talking September, because there'll be one in July, which will be the annual accounts, so it's really the next meeting, which is, I'm sorry.
I think, I think, um, the point that Counselor Hyman was making is this policy needs, the policy itself that's the subject of this recommendation has to go through O and S, and then the executive and council, where there is a...
No, it's finished. The O and S process is finished, I think we...
I think it's spawned a new policy.
Yes, it has, yes, absolutely. Sorry, Chairman, I wasn't clear in my, my point I made was that, that we, this, um, information was as a result of our review, looking at pride or prejudice in social housing, in our council housing, that we then discovered this. So this is an additional recommendation or work to be, knock-off, knock-on work to be done, looking at the allocation policy, so it hasn't been done yet.
My point's still the same, that, you know, he's got all the information he needs to start this process.
Um, probably not on the allocations policy, because the review that the work, this survey work that we undertook was not looking specifically at this particular point. It just so happened, we discovered this particular point along the journey.
Okay, does he need to go back to an O and S committee to get any more information for that?
I would think he probably does, if he is going to do a new policy.
Okay.
And considering the introduction of the Homelessness Reduction Act, Chairman, it says in the...
Members, have you listened to the dialogue? Are you happy to let the December stand?
Yeah, I am.
Any one against? No, good. Right, so we, we put forward the recommendations as well to, yeah, okay. So it's, considers the information contained in annex one, in following discussion of the Audit Committee identifies any actions which is to be taken. And specifically two, considers the head of services justification for a change in the due date for the recommendation, this being annex two, and agree an appropriate implementation date. We're quite happy to leave it. Are we agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you. Let's go to item twelve, fraud investigation. If we could, recognising the time...
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Page seventeen. Page one six nine to one second floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the fraud investigation summary of the work that's been completed by our housing fraud investigator. And you, from the information that I've provided, you can see in the third quarter, one, two to three, obviously, we haven't finished the, the last quarter yet, um, we're not that good. Um, you see, we've recovered, uh, four properties have been relinquished, tenancies have been relinquished, and several others that have been meeting on our meeting list have a property. And the financial information, the stats that you, uh, took around. Uh, as you can see on the table, although our, our figures regarding the successes has gone down, we have been dealing with quite a lot of difficult and, uh, long-winded cases. Um, but of course, most of the, most of those up to now have been successful, so the time invested has been, um, good for us, good for us. And I don't think there was anything else that I need to, need to say.
Members, comments, please. Can we be brief?
Very happy with this, except for the spelling of the word relinquished repeatedly, so...
Sorry, Counselor Mulliner had his hands up first. Um, this table, um...
Yes.
The second column is headed referrals received since first of April twenty seventeen.
Four.
Eighteen.
Should be eighteen, I think, yes.
He's, he's shocking me.
So when you say cases started, does that include this, looking at social, social housing fraud? Um, cases currently being addressed from previous year?
Yes.
Referrals through this, so you add, so the third column is some of the both, that makes sense.
So cases started are, includes previous years plus current.
And was there a reference to showing what has been done in the previous year? This is, um, down, down at the bottom, is it?
Yes.
I see, yeah.
It's one suggestion, I think it was Counselor Seaborn had made at one of our previous, uh, audit committees some time ago to have, uh, and it's...
Remember, it was the businesses rate you might have this year.
In some ways, yes, you can, from the figures.
Yep.
But of course, what that does mean is the fact that we've actually got someone who's doing our fraud investigation, and there's, work is getting out there. We actually have got somebody, and doing this sort of work, I think actually is actually as a deterrent, uh, for those that are...
Prevention is better than cure.
Trying to, yes.
Very good.
Counselor Seaborn? And so, Hyman?
No, just, I think, I think it's good. I think it really supports the work, and, and I think you're very well, yeah.
Counselor Townsend. And I think it's been a tremendous exercise here. I would commend you. I know the work that the investigator's done, come across it. And I think it's extremely good, and I'm sure that a lot of cases are not coming to you, because people know that they're going to be investigated, and it reduces. And I think this is a question of an investment that's been well worthwhile.
Yeah.
Let's see what we've got said formally for you. And it's recommend the Audit Committee notes the success of the housing fraud investigation activity with the results achieved and the improvements in processes to limit the opportunity for fraud and housing Tennessee practice to occur in the future. Are we all agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you. Next item is eighteen, strategic risk register one seventy-five to two ten, computer, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman. So there's two aspects to this. The, um, there's the risk management policy and the risk register, which we've had a previous session on already, um, which is an exempt, you know, the risk register. Um, so the risk, the risk management policy, we took the opportunity to revise that along with the, uh, the new risk register that we do work on, um, which supports the, uh, the corporate plan, which, uh, tends to be early, well, last year now, towards the end of last year. So there's been a significant amount of work done on the risk register, uh, incorporating the risk appetite statement, which the Audit Committee's been involved in that process all the way through last year. Um, so you've now got from page one seven nine, the risk management policy itself, supported by the toolkit, which, um, is there to support the officers and, and the Audit Committee to, um, to, to have a, a uniform assessment of risk across the, uh, the different services and aspects of operation. So the, um, the committee's asked to approve the policy and pass comment on the risk register.
Thank you. I should have emphasised, just I wonder if the editor had mentioned that if we do drift into the second part, we have to go into exempt. I'm hoping we don't need to. Um, what we're talking about here is the whole package, whereas the matrix was the one that went to executive and council.
Just the statement.
The statement itself, and so this statement itself's already been approved, and this has been put into the policy document. Members, open to the floor. Counselor Hyman?
Thank you, Chairman. So you can just confirm that the pink bits that we've got in our papers are pink bits, and they've been superseded by the white bits, which I need to see being pink. I need to think, okay, so I won't quote from those at all, but the rest of it's all, all white.
That's pink as well.
That's pink.
Not only the bit on your side, but...
That's pink. Is it?
No, no, it's white, no, not that bit.
Okay, that's not...
Well, such unfortunate, we had a briefing about this.
It is pink. That's his pink.
That is pink, as well, okay. We, we had a briefing about this, fortunately, so we're not going to have to labour it to death or anything, spend a lot of time on it, fortunately. Um, there were some things raised. The main issue that I have here, Chairman, it, it's where all this comes from in the beginning, where we start with corporate strategy, and, um, my view, and I think a few others, um, have to share, share the view, that we don't have sufficiently defined vision and goals, targets, within the corporate strategy. And because of that, that makes it very, very difficult for our officers to create the service plans and, uh, all the excitement and the enthusiasm that's necessary to, to bring these things into fruition. We've got a risk register, which sort of reflects that. It's, it's been very difficult for officers to put something together when you don't really know what you're doing.
Okay, can, but what's the question, Counselor Hyman?
Um, well, ultimately, there's only one area, but, but, until we've got a, a greater, better defined vision and, and goals from the executive of the, the new council, perhaps after May, whatever, then, um, I don't think we can go much further with this. I think they've done a very good job with where they are, but I think they need to have more, but the rest, the issue that I'm concerned about, I do want to question...
Well, we can take the second issue, but can we just address the first one, which is saying that we, we don't have any service plans or anything, so they don't know where they're going? Is that correct?
I didn't say that, Chairman. Actually, we've had the service plans come to us through the O and S committees over the... That, that, I didn't say that, Chairman, actually, we've had the service plans come to us through the O N S committees over the past few weeks, and we've seen there the difficulties in the service plans, because we asked for more definition, that, you know, for the corporate plan, and, and so that became, okay, we'll bring the service plans forward to you, how much detail do you want? And, and we've still got that problem.
Well, that's not quite what I understand what you said, but thank you for that clarification, I do understand that. Do you want to make a comment on that?
Uh, certainly, Chairman. So, uh, councillor Hymen, um, the corporate plan and the context and the content of the corporate plan isn't subject of the risk assess, the, the risk strategy and the risk matrix that sit, sit in front of you now support the corporate plan, but there's no question of content of the corporate plan itself, that's a totally separate matter, it's not less owed for the audit committee.
Thank you. Councillor Townsend, I'll come back to it, Councillor, I, I know you've got.
Um, I just think it's, it's really good, you know, and I think that, um, we already spoke previously about, you know, having wider conversations around language and applying this, and I think this is really good, and it will actually, as you go through and it's used more and more, it will, it will amend, you know, you'll amend bits of it, but it's a really good start. And I, I think it, it will inform, it will help to inform dec- decisions going forward, so I think it's really good. Thank you.
Councillor Mulliner, referring to page one nine two, and impact definitions. Um, I do understand the reasoning, I, I question whether the numbers that are in the financial impact definitions are, uh, correct. I think, uh, we discussed earlier, to call that sort of loss devastating seems to me to be the wrong language, and if we are going to get more precision in the use of this tool, then I think all the language has to be rea-realistic, otherwise it makes life more difficult for ourselves.
Well, do you want to come back on the note?
Um, certainly, thank you, Chairman. Um, councillor, there's something we can work on going forward, collectively.
Yeah, I, I would like to see some examples, as we go through the year, to see if there are issues with it, and don't think we can say it's incorrect, because it's some of, it's a, a chosen set of bands, isn't it?
So, um, Chairman, can I just confirm, because we'll go away and do a bit of research, um, small, significant, critical, would you like us to look at all four, and, uh, and, and just see whether, is it the devastating one that is up next for seven, yeah?
I think that's the one, the utter, utter kilter.
Yeah, okay.
Um, places after all, given when the, uh, when the limit there is basically about a twentieth of what is materiality for our accounts, if you begin to think.
Yes.
And I actually have a suggestion to make for the, if the correct term for the grid, the red, amber and green, we're looking for terms which didn't coincide with those used for either likelihood or impact, um, severe, moderate and minor might be, that you could think of. So that's the overall.
Can you just repeat that, please?
Yeah, um, the red should be called severe outcomes.
Yeah.
The amber, moderate, and the green, minor, um, none of those terms are used in either of the other two axes, or either axis, if you wanted it.
I think that's a good suggestion, yes. Any others?
I'm, I'm, I'm fine, this is a good start.
Okay. Councillor Seaborn?
Um, thank you, Chairman, yeah, I agree, it is a good start. Um, in, in terms of just detail on roles and responsibilities, page hundred and eighty-four. Um, the audit committee, according to this, uh, as to action risks, I don't quite understand what that means, second sentence of audit committee's responsibilities. So the process comprises effective arrangements to identify, evaluate, action, do we, do we mitigate? I'm not quite sure how you actually, yes, oh, page hundred and eighty-four.
Mitigate is probably a better term.
Roles and responsibilities, yes.
Yeah, mitigate is a better term for that, actually.
It's a bit clearer. But a, a greater concern in all of this is that we have, um, it is roles and responsibilities, but then, on the very last item on page hundred and eighty-five, that the word accountability finally creeps in, and I'm just, just a bit concerned that, it, it's fine looking at responsibilities, but somewhere on the line, there has to be a clear definition of accountability for delivering this process, which I suspect sits with section one five one officer, I'm afraid, but, uh, I, I think that probably should be spelt out, because, uh, actually, you know, the, the staff being accountable, um, I've thought that, you know, they're actually more likely to be responsible for most of it, and it's, it's generally the, the more senior managers, so the accountability.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
So, yeah, if you could take a look at that, I think that would be more productive.
Yeah, I could put.
The only other minor point on page one nine one, the, um, bullet points around, uh, legal, regulatory and safety, I think the bullet points have got flipped around, so section five point ten point six.
Give us the page numbers.
Yeah, page one nine one. I see, uh, there are two, two sub-bullets under legal, regulatory, which refer to safety, and then the safety, there are some bullets which refer to legal, so just a minor point.
A trailing T.
Yeah, other than that, endorse councillor Mulliner's point about, you know, the impact definitions, but we've agreed to look at those.
Councillor Hymen, so.
Um, yes, Chairman, I, I've, I've mentioned it before, I mentioned the council meeting, I think, and it was, uh, on page one hundred and ninety-nine, it's our risk appetite, which was adopted on the fifth of, uh, February by the executive. Um, and, uh, I know what people are saying, but, uh, you know, that, that this isn't important, or that it doesn't set any, um, guidelines or policy or anything like that, but, um, I think we're being told it does. And, you know, we're being told that this is, um, guidance for members and the, um, uh, and, and officers, uh, upon, you know, what we've decided is our risk appetite, you know, what we're willing to take a risk on and what we're not willing to take a risk on. Otherwise, I don't know what its purpose is. Um, and I'm very concerned, I, I, I know councillor Mulliner has mentioned the, uh, and I think councillor Seaborn was also concerned, respect to the financial side of it, the first column on the left, and I agree with him on that. As far as the legal and regulatory side is, Chairman, I just don't see that we have any authority to authorize or, or consider that it is okay to, um, for, for there to be any non-compliance that isn't accidental. Clearly, anything accidental is, you know, that, that is a risk, but this, this implies policy and intent.
Okay, but can I ask the officer to come back on the record to give the response to this one? Peter, do you want to do that?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Um, I, I don't believe councillor Hymen, that it actually puts any intent in terms of the, or obligation, as far as the council's concerned, to break the law, it's about, um, assessing risk of decisions that are made. Um, and what they're saying is that we would never take a decision that goes beyond anything minor, in, and, and operating a business such as, uh, uh, the complexity of, um, what Waverley gets into, um, it, it's, it's virtually impossible to say that there are times when we may not, um, try to express a line of minor triviality as far as laws can say.
But then, Chairman, we, we have to say, who decides what's minor and what's trivial, you know, and I've got, um, I've got lots of copies, but, you know, there's, there's the decision notice from the thirteenth of February for a hundred and fifteen million pound scheme, saying that it's just been signed off using N M As, even though I'd already proven it back in November, you'll remember from the J P C, that we couldn't do that lawfully, and that's an admission there that we could, that, that, that was an unlawful decision.
But, but, you've had a response.
So, you know, so I cannot accept that, that we can allow, now, it is the, I'm virtue from the constitution, Chairman, it's the.
Sorry, I'm not hearing the officer saying that we allow.
There's misunderstanding here, I mean councillor Hymen, I think he does not understand what this t-table is about, honestly, I can only assume he doesn't understand it. Look at the start, look at open, if you had an open approach to legal regulatory risk, then you're prepared to do things which might leave you open to a major legal action. Now, remember this key point, no one can prevent any other person from suing them. The High Court has a very proper approach to dealing with vexatious and frivolous actions, because they happen. People can adopt crusade.
This isn't the issue, Chairman.
Excuse me, let me finish. What I'm trying to get you to understand, councillor Hymen, is that this merely says that you are prepared, if you take an open approach to this, prepared to take action which you appreciate might leave you open to a major legal action. You would hope to win, win the action, but you have to put aside resources and money to defend it. If you're less, if you're more risk averse than that, you might take a moderate view, in which case you could cope with something which might lead to a sustained legal action or a regulatory fine. Move down to courtship, which is where we are, you are only prepared to tolerate things which are isolated legal actions, regulatory breach, and if you like, local plan part, part one, always carried the risk, it would suffer judicial review from people who were sufficiently motivated to bring it, as actually happened. But we can say that the legal actions relating to local plan part one are measured in small, single figures over a fifteen year, year period. I would say that was consistent with, with that approach. Had we an adverse approach to that, we would never have had local plan part one at all, because we'd have said, we're going to get sued through, through J R, we don't want to, want to do that. So I think this is a question of, you know how you're going to behave, how you're going to, to run deep, deep business, and you appreciate that you might end up leading to someone deciding off their own bat, without reference to you, to take you to court. That can happen just by living, by walking across, uh, ac- across the road. You can't stop another person from, from suing you if they choose, choose to. And therefore, you have to take a view as to how big a risk of that are you prepared to take in order to carry on living, in order to carry on operating. In my opinion, this is a perfectly sensible set of steps, and our cautious approach is entirely appropriate for this council. It has got nothing to do with whether you think any individual action has to be legal or not, that depends whether other people start suing you for it. But this is just saying what our appetite is, and I think it is perfectly proper.
Would you agree with that, officers?
Yes, and I, I, I would, Chairman, and this, this is not a statement of authority to, um, to, to act in a certain way. It, it's about considering the risks that, um, could occur from taking certain courses of action, and what your tolerances are, because if we were averse along the top, well, we wouldn't be able to run as a business in the way that we do, because we do all sorts of things, we run playground, and who, who would run a children's playground? Um, uh, because, you know, it's just riddled with all these risks, but.
Parks and country stuff.
Parks and country stuff, it's part, it's part, it's part of our core business, so, so in running a playground, we don't say we're going to act illegally, um, and we've author, authorized somebody to do so. We say that we accept that there is, uh, an isolated risk of, um, legal action, because somebody could try and take us on for not maintaining it properly. Now, we try and mitigate that, because we do proper, have proper records, proper maintenance records, et cetera, um, but you, as councillor Mulliner said, you cannot eliminate that risk, so we accept an element of risk under this heading, when we, when we take a decision to develop or, or, or operate a, a playground. And that's just an, one example of, of some of the things we do that carry inherent risks, um, out there in the community. So that we're not saying to Matt Lang, um, you can walk into a situation where you're acting illegally, we're saying we accept that there is a risk of legal action from operating a inherently risky, um, operation. So, so it i, it is, um, it is, uh, this does have a different meaning, it's here as a guide for decision-making, it's not here as a statement of authorities like our contract procedure rules and our finance regulations are, and our scheme of delegation. It, it is, it is a guide to assist, um, decision-making in a inherently risky operation, set of functions that we do. And that, that's what it is, that's the context for this statement.
Well, I'm not entirely sure that, uh, other people would agree with that, looking at it, as to what it is, I mean, I, I appreciate what councillor Mulliner says, and he's, and he speaks like a true lawyer, but, uh, you know, it's, it's our approach, this is the approach that we as councillors are being told, is, um, is, is how we will approach the law. Now, if we are going to get sued by other people, you're absolutely right, we can't stop other people from suing us, but, you know, this is a question of whether we are going into things knowing that they, that it is not entirely lawful to do it, and this allows us to go into things doing that. Well, I mean, you can shake your head, but, you know, try, try being, being a little bit objective about it, rather than, you know, this is, this is what it says.
Councillor Hymen, I'm not shaking, I'm not shaking my head, and.
No, I wasn't referring to you, Chairman, it's councillor Mulliner, Chairman.
It's basically, you've, you've got a situation here where you have repeated that, I'm going to let, um, section one five one officer come back on this, but then I would like to close it, close it down, your major point, and I think that councillor Mulliner has said that he can understand the logic in this and the reasonableness, and I have no problems with understanding the reasonableness, I know we can get sued. I don't believe anyone in this council knowingly and willingly goes into something to basically not complying with the law, that's why.
Yeah, well, I've got the evidence to the contrary, and this is allowing it to happen, Chairman.
Okay, and other things can happen. Greg, please come back.
Chairman, just one final comment then, which is that this, this appetite, uh, statement actually came from sessions held with members of the audit committee, members of the executive and our senior management team. So, thi, thi, this is the sort of culmination of a number of, um, uh, uh, sessions with, facilitated by, um, uh, somebody that Peter procured to do it, and so thi, this isn't something that we've made up, it's come to a properly thought-through process involving, you know, m- members here and members of the executive as well. So, so, you know, the, as an officer team, we're comfortable that this is a helpful guide, um, the executive, we're comfortable that in its decision-making, this will support that, not, not drive decision-making, but support it, um, and, and, and help executive members and, and indeed the officer team when they're taking decisions. So, we're, we're comfortable with it, the executive have agreed it, and asked for comments from the, uh, audit committee, and that's why we're here, Chairman.
Uh, uh, well, thanks very much for that. Chairman, as, as an example of the, of the, of the risk that we've got here, um, we adopted, uh, this council adopted, uh, following officers' advice, an avoidance strategy, in terms of baser needs, don't need to go into any details, but then that comes back to us at meeting. Chairman, I'm sorry, may I actually speak, or are you going to just stop all the debate?
No, it's not a question of debate, you've, you've had an explanation, you've had a chance to raise your point. Now, this is something which is a guide for this, this company, you've been assured that nobody basically goes into it, you've got specific points that you've experienced, and quite rightly, you've raised those points, you've had answers to most of those, if you haven't, then you should raise them. But we're here to say, is this an adequate guidance for officers to run this council? I don't hear, you know, the balance of this committee does not support your comments.
Well, obviously, Chairman, what we have supposedly is a, if, if I can take you to bottom of page thirty, what we're meant to have, um, is a membership that's supportive of good governance principles and the achievement of organizational objectives, apolitical, says this, this is what Sitford, well, no, this is Sitford's guidance, we should, it, it applies to us anyway, a strong independently-minded chair, a candid approach from all participants, unbiased, uh, attitudes and, uh, the ability to challenge the executive and senior management, managers when required. Now, you know, if, if we're going to be able to do that, Chairman, then we've got to be able to discuss things and debate them, haven't we?
Well, we have, and this is, this document has been through O N S, it's been through executives, been through council, they have, the officers have put a pers, policy and a procedure around this, a toolkit, to implement it. Now, we can make observations, and your observations have been recorded on this, but we're not going to fundamentally renegotiate this matrix. We'll make the comments, now this matrix, I'm more concerned, as Chair, to actually watch very carefully how this matrix works in practice, because I think I've got concerns over certain of the binding and other things we've talked about. Um, but none of your, none of your other members of the committee has a problem with that legal placing.
I'm not surprised, Chairman, I'm not surprised at all, because, you know, they're, people do not wish to scrutinize the work that their own, uh, authority has done.
I think that's.
Perhaps normally in a scrutiny situation, you'd listen to people who aren't part of that.
I think.
But, Chairman, can I have something minute in, um, please, because, um, otherwise we'll take this on all night.
Well, if you take the previous comment, I think we can.
We are constrained by the law, and we cannot decide that we are not, and this implies that we are, the officers are allowed to at some point advise us that actually know, we have agreed, we're going to go down that line.
Councillor Hymen, you've had a very specific comment back from the section one five one officer, who's actually got a lot more at stake in this than perhaps we as members have, that that is not, that is not.
I absolutely, a, a, a hundred percent respect his position, and that I know is how it's been brought forward, but I'm saying, we agree this, and the, how it can be interpreted in future, at any time, and it can come back to us with officers saying, actually, members, you have agreed that we don't have to tell you about regulatory breaches if we're planning it.
If I put this to.
But the constitution says we do have to, it's the monitoring officers. But the constitution says we do have to. It's the monitoring officer's job, Chairman. And we are not allowed to, any regulatory breaches, this on, certainly that are not accidental, we're not allowed to.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councillor Hyman, I don't, I've had discussions with you before. I don't agree with your interpretation of this. Having something challenged in front of the courts is our process we operate in this in this country. That does not mean to say that there can't be differences of opinion, right? And we've had that discussion. There is no black and white manual often to run our lives. We have to take interpretations. Now, I've let you go on, your points have been made, it's been made on camera. I'm not going to minnit something because we've minnit the debate and we will minnit it, the minute the point, we will minnit the section one five officer's response. Now, I'm going to put this recommendation to the committee. The recommendation is it's recommended that the risk management policy be approved and risk register be reviewed and comments and observations be passed to officers. Is that right? I'm hoping you're actually approving this because it hasn't actually gone to council.
It 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 doesn't need to go to council, Chairman. The executive have.
No, the executive has agreed the matrix, the risk matrix.
Oh, so I beg pardon, yes, the policy.
And this is a, this is the policy, so we don't need to.
So is it a lack of management?
No, the delegation was to section one five to make any management of the matrix.
Sorry, yeah, probably, yeah.
Yeah, it is the policy and we do approve the policy. Sorry, just a small problem with the proposed recommendation. So the recommendation is that we that that we endorse it and and pass it on to council to be approved. If we want to make any separate comments on the risk matrix, we can do. Um, and our comments that we have got, which are inherent within the minutes of this meeting, will go to the section one five officer and we will have a separate discussion to look at that. I'm hoping, members, that you can agree this. All those in favor?
Agreed.
Agreed.
All those against?
I know that one I, one issue though, Chairman, I don't have any problem with the rest of it.
That's been recorded, Councillor Hyman. Thank you. Okay, committee. Yeah, we. Right, future work programs, you know, filled by ten o'clock, we've got for the resolution. Orange resolution, it's a bit like a red card.
Yeah, I know.
I've just noted our work program, Chairman.
Pardon?
I've just noted that work cha- work program, Chairman, we agreed, we've got half a minute to agree.
Any observations, comments, or can we just agree?
I'm happy with it.
Agreed.
Agreed, you're welcome. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Councillor Hyman. Thank you, officers. We seem to be extending our hours. I would ask you to get your own information.